Okay, very good. All right, if everyone will be kind enough to take their seats. The April 20, 2011 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programs, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. We always make this announcement at each of our meetings that this building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. So should alarms activate, please leave through the exits and then our marshal will tell you when it's safe to re-enter. This is purely a cautionary instruction. We have no reason to believe that this would ever take place, but we do it as a matter of course. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Monsignor Kevin McCollough, pastor, St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Roman Catholic Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to offer the invocation this morning. Let us pray. Loving Father, your divine wisdom which seeks only what is good for your children, finds its best expression in our right care and concern for one another. May we look to you first, the author and architect of all creation, for guidance in meeting the daily challenges of governing and being governed, so that together we may continue to grow and prosper in your sight. May our city and community be therefore a place of opportunity and safe welcome for resident and visitor alike. May the resources at our disposal be used for our mutual betterment, and may the truly needy among us find justice and hope which right governance can provide. Father, the issues that face us in the present moment can be often difficult and daunting. They can make us doubt our worth and ability to deal successfully with them. Be with us now in each moment of our lives so that our work will reflect the guidance of your loving hand, the full perspective only your wisdom can provide, and the good work of creation continue through those here present to whom it has been entrusted. With you all things are possible. Confirm our faith and optimism so that we may build a firm foundation on which those who follow us in generations to come will know that you bless the work of your servants who in all matters place before them, look first to you. Secure in this truth, they will add accordingly to the worthy and humble efforts put forth in this time and place. In the true and living God we place our trust. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, good. Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. This is a wonderful time for the city of Las Vegas, the swearing-in ceremony of three elected officials, and I'm glad to see that there are so many of their friends and family and supporters here to appreciate the fine work that each one of these lady and gentleman have done, which warranted their reelection. In honor of this day, we'd like to have the swearing-in for Ward 1 and Ward 5 council members, and municipal court judge department 5 will have presentations and photographs with each of their families. Would Councilwoman Tarkanian's executive staff, Robin Munier and Kimberly Reed, please come forward? Councilwoman's family is out of town, won't be able to be with her today. It's the spring break, and I know they'd love to be with her because they've been completely supportive of her, and it's one of the nicest families that I've ever seen. But we're pleased that her staff is here today, and Councilwoman Tarkanian, would you please stand to my right? And would you please raise your right hand? Do you, Lois Tarkanian, solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, that you are not under any direct or indirect obligation to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to any office, position, or employment in the government of the city of Las Vegas, that you are a bona fide resident at the stated address, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office in which you are about to enter. So help you God. Okay? And now you're going to be presented with the certificate of election and some beautiful flowers.
My pleasure, Councilwoman. I think that Councilman Barlow is going to do it, but he hasn't tended to blame child. Congratulations.
You know, I truly feel honored to have been re-elected, and I want to say appreciation to Ward 1, not only for electing me, but also for the number of people who came out and voted in Ward 1. We're the smallest number of residents in a ward in the city, and we had the largest number, not percentage, largest number of voters turnout. You have to be true believers in what you're doing, and you hope that the people you're trying to help believe in it also. And I wanted to say that what we've tried to do is empower our citizens so that they can learn what resources are available, we can help show them how to access those resources, and then they take that knowledge and they become leaders in their neighborhood. Our neighborhood associations have grown by a large number, and by just this last weekend, what we were doing out in the community, planting trees along Evergreen, our Samoan group in Ward 1 helping us so much, I think it shows that we all are true believers of that. Now, if you win a race by nearly 75%, it's not just you who did that, it's also the people who helped develop the leadership within the office. And I want to say a thank you today to my staff, Kimberly Reed, executive assistant, and Robin Munier, liaison, our community liaison. It's because of their hard work that we were able to accomplish what we accomplished, and I'm very, very grateful to them. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and we are going to miss your levity, I'm going to tell you that.
If that's the only thing you're going to miss, you're well off, that's fine. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Now, we're going to have pictures of the Councilwoman and her staff, and then there'll be a photograph of the Councilwoman, her staff, and the City Council.
You know what, it's wonderful working with a council that tries to help you out all the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, now would Councilman Barlow and his family come forward, please? I'd like to introduce everyone as they're coming to the podium. Ricky's wife, Samara, couldn't be with us this morning, but we have his mother-in-law, Eleanor Butler. Oh. All right, who made this up?
She's back there.
No, I want to fire her. This is outrageous. Ms. Bueller, accept my humble apology for the horrible work of staff. I hope we have his father's name right, Nathaniel, right? And his two sons, Jalon and Ricky II, who has been making a lot of noise.
So does his dad.
And so does his dad. Okay, Councilwoman, just standing to my right, and I'll get the oath. If you'd be kind enough to raise your right hand. Do you, Ricky Barlow, solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, that you are not under any direct or indirect obligation to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to any office, position, or employment in the government of the city of Las Vegas, that you are a bona fide resident at the stated address, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office in which you are about to enter. So help you God. We have some nice flowers for Ms. Bueller. And the Councilman's certificate of election for him. And I don't know, are you able to say a few words with the youngster?
I am. First and foremost, I really want to take this opportunity to thank God, who is truly the head of my life and for blessing me to be on the Las Vegas City Council. I share with people all the time that my seed was planted in this community, and what you see standing before you is the fruit of that seed. I mean that literally, I mean that figuratively as well. My parents taught me at a very early age that Ricky, it's about giving back. The more you give, the more God gives to you. And sitting on the Las Vegas City Council, I am so elated and I'm so proud because as a youngster growing up in this community, having to literally fight my way out of my neighborhood, I never thought that I would be here a part of a great think tank, a great visionary such as the mayor in this council to really drive the city in the direction that we know and that you know it should go in. And so for that, I take my job very seriously, I am very humbled for the opportunity, and I'm very thankful to all of my friends, my family, and in particular, my wife, who is unfortunately unable to be here today, and of course, my son, Jalen, who's not here as well, but I do have little Ricky with me, as well as my father, Nate, my mother-in-law, Mrs. Bueller, and my brothers, I see Jeff and Toby, and my sister-in-law, Ann, and all my nieces and nephews, and of course, my brother Greg and Cory, and my sister Natalie, who is unable to be here. I want to thank them and tell them publicly that I love them. The campaign trail, I can't say that it was as difficult as my first run, but I do want to thank my campaign staff, my campaign manager, Mr. Andreas Ramirez, my director of technology, Mr. Jay Matos, who is here in the audience here, my public relations manager and fundraising chair, Ms. Roxanne McCoy, and my field coordinator, Mr. Marco Rauda, who assisted me in achieving the 73% victory to my second term. And of course, I want to thank my very good friends and confidant, Mr. John Edmonds and Mr. Lonnie Roston, who really have supported me from day one. I really thank you guys and really love you as father figures for keeping me straight and helping me keep my nose clean, as the older gentleman would tell me as I was growing up. Ricky, keep your nose clean, go to school, come back to your community, and serve, and I believe I'm doing that, I'm looking forward to continuing to do that, and also being business friendly and getting in the neighborhoods and really improving the quality of life for all of our residents. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention what I consider my other two wives in my office, my executive assistant, Tanya Jackson-Renter, please stand up, Tanya, and also my chief of staff, Idalina Utralde. I tell them all the time that I believe that they work for my wife because I can't get anything done without them asking me for my credit card. But I really want to thank you all, and of course, Mr. Harry Williams, who is my neighborhood planner, and of course, Assemblyman Stephen Brooks, who also won his election this past November, who was my former chief of staff, who is now in the state legislature. I want to really thank you all for your love and your support in being able to put Ward 5 in the forefront of revitalizing communities and improving the quality of life. And of course, to the fabulous constituents of Ward 5, I see a lot of you all here today from the neighborhood associations. I don't want to start calling out the neighborhood associations, the homeowners associations, but I do see you, I do thank you for your unwavering support. And of course, all of my financial supporters as well, thank you also very much because you all helped me make it possible. And so for that, I'm looking forward to get back up on the dais and get the work for you all. So thank you all so very much, and please keep me lifted in your prayers. Thank you so very much, and God bless you. And the mayor said that I can get two more minutes to say a few more things. I do want to say something, really, Mayor. I do, I do, I do really want to say something. Mayor Goodman and Mayor Pro Tem Gary Reese, thank you all so very much for your leadership, specifically you, Mayor Pro Tem. You've been here the longest. Mayor, of course, during your entire tenure, you have made this city something that I don't believe anyone ever imagined. So for your leadership, thank you, thank you, thank you so very much for all that you all have done, and I look forward to continuing the progress that you all have laid as we continue to move forward with my colleagues who will be sitting with me as we move forward for the next four years, and of course, the incoming mayor and the next council representative that will replace Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you all so very much for your leadership.
Okay, we have pictures of the family. We'll be done with the council.
Okay. Sit down.
Would Judge Cedric Kearns and his family please come up? I'd like to introduce them as they're coming up, Your Honor. Judge Kearns' wife, Rebecca, his mother, Vivian, his sister, Eileen Martin Hall, and two of his daughters, Tiffany and Nicole. Brittany couldn't join us here today. Anybody else that we should mention, Judge?
Why my auntie and my brother-in-law down there, but I didn't want to talk to them.
That's okay. Why don't your auntie and your brother-in-law join us up here? Sure. I mean, this doesn't come along about every six years with you.
My son is in the Marines, he's not with us.
And the judge's son is in the Marine Corps and isn't able to be with us today. Where's he stationed, Your Honor?
In Japan.
In Japan. All right, a few folks, we gather round. At this time, I'm pleased to administer your oath of office, and Vivian, I understand that you're going to hold the Bible for his honor? Okay, if you'd be kind enough to have your... That's perfect. You've done this before, Judge. Do you, Cedric Kearns, solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, that you are not under any direct or indirect obligation to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to any office, position, or employment in the government of the city of Las Vegas, that you are a bona fide resident at the stated address, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office in which you are about to enter. So help you God. Congratulations. Okay. Your Honor? The mic is yours.
Did I get robe?
Oh, do you? I think you should, yes. Who's going to robe you? Oh, please. See, I've always wanted a robe too. No, no, as a matter of fact, folks, wait, no. If you ever come up to my office, I got a beautiful robe from the ambassador of Uzbekistan, and since City Hall is closed on Friday, you could come up any Friday afternoon, and I put the robe on, take my shoes off, and I walk around the 10th floor, all by myself. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking the citizens of Las Vegas for re-electing me. You know, when I filed for election, I had so many people telling me that it was going to be an easy race, you know, I was one of the top-rated judges, judge of the year, I had all these accolades, and they're saying, "Don't, no problem, you'll be okay." But, you know, I didn't take it for granted. My mom taught me that you never take anything for granted. The day that she found out I had an opponent, she was vacationing in the Philippines, she flew in to help me. And there are a bunch of folks here today who did not take my election for granted. They opened their house up for me, they walked for me on weekends, they gave up their time, they gave up their money. And if it weren't for them, I could honestly tell you I wouldn't be here today. I'm touched, I'm moved, I thank you. I will remember you. And I'm just thankful that the citizens were there for me. You know, I can't brag about a 73% victory, I'm sorry, but 74. But, you know, one vote is what it takes. I've dedicated 14 years to the city of Las Vegas and in the court, and we've accomplished a lot of stuff. And I'm very happy that I get to continue and work where we've gone forward. Now, so many people have helped me that I'm not even going to start to name them all because when Rob Baer did that, it took about two hours. But I want you to know that I greatly, greatly appreciate it, and I have to thank my family. I'm tough to deal with, but during campaign season, it's really difficult, but they were there for me the whole time, and I want to thank you for being there. When I was getting sworn in today, or when I was coming in, I was meeting people and they were asking me, because I don't know if you guys can see, but I have a black eye. It's red and it's swollen, and some people were asking me what happened, so I'm just going to share it. On Monday, I had a defendant who was unhappy with the enormous traffic fines that the city was imposing for the moving violation, and as I was talking to him, he got upset and he jumped over the desk and he caught me in the eye. That is absolutely not true. But it's much better than what really happened. Before I end, I want to congratulate you two, and Councilman Reese and Mayor Goodman, we've been together for all of my tenure and all of your tenure, and I want to tell you that we've had some very terrific times, except for that time you threw me out of the office. But I could tell you, after next month, that'll never happen again. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Yes. Right. It's a privilege to have your son. I know you've always been great. Thank you. Yes. Sure, I think so.
Congratulations.
Marty, how are you? Okay, we'll put this together. How are you? Good seeing you. Thank you, thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hi, how are you there?
These people aren't here, there's one person there.
Give you one more please, Mr. Goodwin, sir.
Good, that's good.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if I've got enough for everybody here, but that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
Since he's my man here, I'm in the third ward.
Well, we're trying to...
Because like, everyone's like all over the place, we just wondering if I could get a picture for you.
Sure, let's do it quickly, because I want to...
Do you have a photographer?
Yeah, they're over there.
Come on, gang, let's, got to move it on, got a lot of people. I'm happy to do it.
It's for our government class to prove that we were here.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. It's for our project for class, so we can prove that we were here.
Come on, everybody, let's go. We're all going to be here for government class, come on. You got to turn around, they won't know who you are. There you are, listen. Oh, boy. All right? Good. Great. Good. You going to stick around now?
Yeah.
Okay, good, okay, good.
All right, folks, if everyone would be kind enough to take their seats, we're going
You know, those are hard acts to follow. My congratulations to my colleagues on the council and Judge Kearns, but I want to recognize some pretty neat stuff, too. I'm often approached by people in the community that come up to me, and they talk about how great our city staff is at our various facilities, so today I want to recognize some special people. Recently, an attorney in town by the name of Scott Icorn came up to me and shared an experience that he had due to a recent fire that occurred at his place of business. On February 9th of this year, a two-alarm fire engulfed the building where his law office was located. As he approached the building, he was certain that his business would be devastated and that everything he has worked so hard to build would be gone. Imagine, this is a practicing lawyer who has a lot of client files in his office building. He was glad to see that the firefighters were working so hard to extinguish the fire, but he was worried about what he would find inside of his office building. Ironically, it turned out that it was not the actual fire suppression that he was most grateful for, but rather the salvage efforts that our city of Las Vegas firefighters engaged in. As you can see from some of the pictures on the monitor, from the outside, it was business as usual for our firefighters, or at least what we consider business as usual, but from the inside, something just as important was being done. To Scott's surprise, nearly 99% of his business was still intact after the fire was put out. This was only because of the efforts of the firefighters on scene. They had moved all of the property, including all of his client files, into a room in the center, and they covered it with heavy tarps to protect it from damage primarily by the thousands of gallons of water. When you put out a fire, you use a lot of water. Water can cause damage. So these firefighters had moved everything into the center of the room, covered it with plastic to protect it. At this time, Scott, would you please come up to the podium and just say a few words about what your experience is? I've cautioned them that we're running a little late, so just... But Scott has a special kind of story, because this is not the first fire that you experienced, is that right?
That's very true, Councilman. When I was about four or five years old, I distinctly remember holding my aunt's hand as watching the family home burn to the ground, and there was nothing left from that, absolutely nothing. And so when I approached my office building on the 9th, I thought for sure this was going to be the same thing, and I was really, just really proud of our firefighters and what they did.
That's fantastic, that's fantastic. I'd like to invite Chief Myers and perhaps Chief Miramantes up, please. How about a round of applause? These are the guys that did all the work.
Thank you, Councilman. We're also very proud of the firefighters, they do great work every day, hitting the performance measures and putting fires out and doing a myriad of other things. But the entire fire operations network is under the command and leadership of Deputy Chief Miramantes. He's one of the primary reasons we're so successful in that arena, and I wanted to give him a chance to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. I'm just here representing the troops out there, doing the job day in and day out. Every call that we go on, we have three priorities. Obviously, the first one is life. The second one, in our insert priorities, is seeing stabilization, which means when we get there where that fire is, we're going to stop it. And the third one is property conservation, and this is a prime example of that, and the effects on our community and why it's so important. So you can tell by the pictures, it's the least glamorous, I mean, there's no fire, there's just a tarp. I mean, you know, it's not that exciting, but what it does for a business owner and especially in our economy, we're just proud. So on behalf of the Engine 4 Crew, the Truck 3 Crew, Battalion Chief Asibo, thank you. We have Engineer John Kelly that was there that night. Please, John, stand up, he's representing the crew. Councilman, thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Scott, thank you so much for coming down and sharing the story. Okay, moving on, I am very, very proud to say that we have some great leisure centers here in the city of Las Vegas. My favorite, partly because it's the only leisure facility in my ward, is the Veterans' Memorial Leisure Services Center, which is next to the Pavilion Pool and the Palo Verde High School. Every time I'm there, I see a wide variety of activities. I mean, you walk in the place, you see a gym, you see a basketball court, you see various classes going on, a very active community center. At one of our events last October, we had a Zumba class demonstration. And people laugh, as I did too, I didn't even know what a Zumba class was until a few weeks ago, but I thought that those students really looked like they were enjoying their workout. If you're not familiar with Zumba, it is a high-energy workout with exotic rhythms set to Latin and international music. It doesn't look like the students are working, but they sure are getting a great workout. Recently, one of our students at one of our classes by the name of Ann Germain wrote in to the city of Las Vegas to let us know about her experience. Ann said, "What an incredible impact the center has had on her life." She explained that she had put on some weight, felt a little sluggish and unhealthy, and generally lacked motivation. She says that since taking these classes at our city facility, she has had her life changed for the better forever. She lost almost 40 pounds and is well on to reaching her personal goals. She then started attending the Pump and Sculpt classes with one of our instructors, Rosemary, last summer, and said it's one of the most challenging weight training classes she's ever had to follow. More importantly, she feels safe when she goes into our city facilities, which is real, real important. She then started taking Pilates and yoga with one of our instructors by the name of Sue, who you may have seen leading our Tai Chi class outside before our meeting started. It is my pleasure to invite Ann up to the podium. Please come up, Ann. I want you to kind of share your story with us. Let's give a round of applause for Ann. What I will call a big city of Las Vegas welcome. So tell us about your experience at the Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center.
Well, I'm a newcomer to this wonderful city, and I was looking for a place to go for not only fitness, but friendship as well. And I think that that center is certainly my favorite as well, because that's exactly what it provided. And the fabulous instructors that they have there have just really made a difference in my life, and I know I speak for many who showed up to support Sue and Rosemary and Leslie and Danielle. So I'm just so grateful that the city has that to offer.
Stay right here, please. Mary Killian, Mary is our center coordinator and the fitness instructor that perhaps changed your life, is here. Sue Pappas, Sue, come on up real quick. And I also, I mean, look at how popular the class is. Are you ladies all participants at our center? Fantastic, fantastic. I also want to recognize Danielle, and I'm going to chop this up bad, Lemnizik, Rosemary Willhide, and Leslie Nofsinger, they are also fitness instructors, and we have certificates for all of them. But Sue, would you please take the microphone and very quickly tell us about an experience that you're having at our city facility and what a great student Ann was?
Ann was awesome, but she's like a lot of the people that you see there, and any, from the ages of early twenties all the way up to Ruth right there, stand up, she's like in her eighties.
Where's Ruth?
So, they are, these people are serious about having fun, but also about getting healthy and staying healthy, and it's just a joy and a privilege to work with them all.
On behalf of the city of Las Vegas, you're not city employees, but you contract with the city to provide these services. Oh, you are an employee, okay, but, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, part-time, that's good. Well, thank you very much for your service, Ann, thanks so much for coming down, and visit our city facilities. In all of our wards, we have great facilities. Good morning and thank you very much.
See, you asked the one question. See, Councilman Wilson's going to learn, good lawyers never ask a question they don't know the answer to. Okay, for our next item, we're going to recognize the April Employee of the Month. I'd like to ask the city's Finance Department Director Candace Falder to join us at the podium, and I'm proud to announce that the April Employee of the Month is John Lombard. John? Hi, John. Congratulations. Thank you. John is a buyer, too. Oh, yes. Ms. Lombard? Join your son up here, please. Good. Thank you. Thank you. John is a buyer, too, with the city's Purchasing and Contracts Division, and has been with the city since November of 2006. John is known for his ability to quickly act to save the city money and to ensure that taxpayers are getting the best bang for their buck. For example, he recently contracted with a moving company to transport the equipment and furnishings of city staff to the new Development Services Center on Rancho Drive. Three weeks from the moving date, the mover selected lost the loan on his business, but John was able to quickly complete negotiations and bring a new mover onboard so that the process of relocating into the new building was not delayed. John is often overheard in the purchasing and contracts offices renegotiating contracts and getting significant concessions on commission fees for the city. He also researched the various online auction options, and now the city has a very successful online auction for unneeded equipment and supplies. All of John's hard work is paying off for the city since 2008, listen to this, since 2008, he has saved the city about $290,000. Let's give him a round of applause on that one. We appreciate the dedication and customer service that John demonstrates every day. So, John, on behalf of the entire city council, we'd like to congratulate you on being named the April 2011 Employee of the Month, and along with this plaque, John has received a $100 Visa gift card, which he promptly bet on the Lakers. Spurs, okay. And, my kind of guy. A compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union and a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPon. So I'd like to ask Candy to say a few words, and then we'll hear from John and maybe even John's mom here. Candy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate John, it's well-earned. He's a great ambassador for our entire department as well as the Purchasing Division. I can, when I walk around our floor, we have accounts payable, and I hear the ladies all the time if they get in a bind or have questions, "Well, just call John, just call John, he'll get you the answers, he'll research it." He's that way with all of his customers, he's willing to pitch in, he is a fantastic team member, and he sets an example for all of us. Congratulations, John.
Thank you. Well, I'm very honored to be here today, and service is what this position is all about, whether I be serving internal customers or external customers on a daily basis, that's what I really enjoy the most. You know, about four and a half years ago, I wasn't sure when I first signed up for this job, wasn't sure how it would work out, but in retrospect, I know I made the right choice. I'm very, very elated to be able to serve each of you, my colleagues, as well as the folks that I negotiate with every, each and every day. I'm very grateful to my mother and my daughter who couldn't be here today. Her name is Elaine, and she's very proud of her dad, and I know my mom's proud of me too. So, thank you to everybody, my colleagues, my staff members, too numerous to name, my manager Kathy Rainey, for her leadership and vision that she bestows on each of us every day. So, and thank you, Candy. Thank you, Mayor and council, city management staff. It's a pleasure to work with all of you every, every day, and couldn't think of any place I'd rather be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just want to say that John is really more than his job. He is my caregiver since my husband passed away five years ago, and he's a devoted father to his little girl, and he is, works to keep his neighborhood going, and he's active in the community. So I just want to say, I'm a very proud mother, and I want to thank you, Mayor, and the council, and everyone who made this day possible. It's just a dream come true. Thank you.
I thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For our next ceremonial item, we're going to honor the Team of the Quarter. The Team Quarterly Recognition Program is an effort within the city honoring a group of city employees that exemplifies the city's vision, mission, values, and priorities through exceptional teamwork and outstanding performance. I'd like to ask the Planning Department Acting Director Flynn Fag to join us at the podium. Flynn? There he goes. I'm pleased to announce that the Team of the Quarter is the Development Services Center Electronic Records Management Team. The city has millions of paper and electronic records that are stored in various repositories, and as part of the sustainability initiative, these records need to be consolidated for easier access and record-keeping. This ultimately results in a more transparent government that saves money on paper costs and provides better customer service to the public. There were more than 5 million Development Services electronic documents and records spread across three different repositories when the project started in January 2009. Now, through the work of this team, there are more than 6 million records, all stored in the same database, so that they can be easily searched and located. This task was accomplished in coordination with the move of several city departments to the new Development Services Center on Rancho Drive. Because of the work of this team, there were far fewer boxes of paper records that needed to be moved to the new building. This project team includes 45 city employees from five city departments. This is a large group of employees, but when you're dealing with such a large number of documents spread out over multiple departments, you need people to really work together to get the job done. First, I want to recognize Luanne Holmes from the city clerk's office for managing this project, and invite her to join us at the podium. Luanne? There she goes. Now, I'm going to call each of the team's members' names and ask that they stand and remain standing to be recognized. Scott Whitney, Dawn Henderson, Mike Philippan, Kristen Carducci, Gra Levitt, Roxana Smith, Bessie Dyson, Sharon Coons, Marlene Benbow, Sherri Williams, Robert Hussey, Mike Halgen, Peter Rosato, Lana Richardson, Chris Rich, Nancy Aminzon, Chris Berrench, Bill Snyder, James Paget, Doty Bateson, Mary Wolfe, Susan Billado, Kevin Kearney, Doug Rankin, Renee Carlson, Peter Lowenstein, Denise Kaplan, Darlene Reader, Robert Welch, Albert Sung, Victor Bolanos, Rick Schroeder, Pamela Samuolos, Dennis Moyer, Adele Wright, Shelley DiNocchio, Ray Martin, Barney Perkins, Roger Bailey, Bart Anderson, Lucian Payet, Charles Reichhold and Sharon McKenzie. Did I miss anybody? Okay, I hope I pronounced everybody's name right, too. If I didn't, forgive me, please. Let's give them a big round of applause. And Flynn, a couple words, please.
As our city clerk will tell you, this electronics records management project was a very large and complex project, and it was accomplished only through the efforts of many hours of staff time, and as you can see here in the audience, many staff members who contributed their time and their efforts to this project. What's most impressive is that this wasn't just the work of one department, but rather it was accomplished through teamwork from many departments, and for that, we congratulate and celebrate you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now what?
I think we're done.
I think we're done. Have a seat, folks. No, go back to work is right. Congratulations, and thank you very much for your excellent work. For our next item, I'd like to invite Betty Evans, the Vice Chair of the Senior Citizens' Advisory Board, to join us at the podium to present the Senior of the Quarter. Betty?
Hi, how are you? Nice seeing you.
It's very nice to be here today.
As our city clerk will tell you, this electronics records management project was a very large and complex project and it was accomplished only through the efforts of many hours of staff time and as you can see here in the audience, many staff members who contributed their time and their efforts to this project. What's most impressive is that this wasn't just the work of one department, but rather it was accomplished through teamwork from many departments and for that, we congratulate and celebrate you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now what? I think we're done. Have a seat, folks. No, go back to work is right. Congratulations and thank you very much for your excellent work. For our next item, I'd like to invite Betty Evans, the Vice Chair of the Senior Citizens' Advisory Board, to join us at the podium to present the Senior of the Quarter. Betty?
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you.
It's very nice to be here today and it's kind of a really getting a hard act to follow with all these jokes and levity in here. But one of the things that we saw just earlier about the Veterans Memorial Leisure Services Center is that there are like three qualities in your life and one is diet, one is exercise, and the other key is volunteerism, giving back to your community. And that's what I'd like to recognize today, the volunteering. So we have today, come to the podium with me, Frank Peroni. Come on up here. And Frank's family is here. Want you to all stand up. So Frank reminds me of my mother. Not in his stature, but in what he does. Frank drives neighbors to the doctors. He's a volunteer side, crossing guard. Help me out, Frank. Crossing guard. And he's been doing that for over 25 years at the Wasdun Elementary School. I mean, he's getting up every morning and walking your children back and forth to school and he volunteers to do that. In 2005, he walked his 1,000,000th child across that school and he's still counting. So we'll figure out where he is in the next 10 years. Also, some of the things he does for his neighbors is if they need some yard work done or chores around the house, I can just see him installing a light switch for somebody. I can see him out in that yard pulling out all those weeds that the association has got on us about. Frank also deals with the youth in the community, right? Ice, hockey.
I also happen to be the general manager of the UNLV Club Hockey Team. And like Betty said, you know, when you run into people like this, it's an honor to get to know them and, you know, nothing goes without saying that you put a lot into the different things you do. You don't always get rewarded in money. You get rewarded in thanks. And before I forget, I want to thank my family because, you know, I've taken an awful lot of time away from them and sometimes they say, "Can't you keep them a little bit longer?" But anyway, like I said, I appreciate the opportunity to receive this award and I want to thank Betty and her crew for presenting this award to me. Thank you very, very much.
We do have a little award for Frank.
I wanted Ricky and I both to give this because he resides in Ricky's ward.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But I also want to say that Wasdun Elementary School is in my ward and this man has been out there all the time. When he wasn't there for a little while and we had a little up and down situation with the school district, well, all of the children would stop and ask, "Where's Frank? Where's Frank?" So Frank is part of us, all of us, and we thank you, Frank.
And I'll see you in Washington.
Before I leave also, you know, I've come to an awful lot of meetings here and see a lot of wonderful people, but before I leave the podium, I also would like to congratulate Mayor Goodman, Pro Tem Gary Reese for the job that they've done and I know they're going to be missed. And I could say one thing for you right now. Call it political if you like, but his wife will be the next mayor and she's already saving money by saying, "I don't have to change the mayor's sign." It's already up there, Mayor Goodman. Again, once again, thank you very much.
That could have been about 1,000 ethics violations that I just received right there. But, no, sorry Frank, you can do it early and often, anytime you want. Thank you very much. Okay, for our last item, Councilman Anthony is going to recognize a charitable organization that's doing great work in Las Vegas.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. It's my honor today to recognize a outstanding community partner and that's the United Way of Southern Nevada. I'd like to ask the Vice President Mike Calloff to come up here with me. Why don't you come up here, Mike? Give him a nice round of applause. He is the Vice President. It's a pretty big title. Since 1957, United Way of Southern Nevada has attracted people with the desire to make our community a better place to live. Today, individuals and companies alike share their energy and resources so that our children, families, seniors, and others in need can receive assistance and lead fulfilling, productive lives. In 2008, United Way laid the groundwork for its community-based agenda and created opportunities for people to obtain their building blocks needed for good life. These include a quality education that leads to a stable job and income that can support a family through retirement and good health. United Way goes beyond just quick fixes by actively working with community partners to change community conditions and improve lives with generous contributions and countless volunteer hours. Together, they're achieving the kind of positive outcomes that no one can accomplish alone. In 2009, United Way, in collaboration with local partners, accomplished the following, just to name a couple. More than 3,000 people with immediate needs received energy, fuel, food, housing, and employment information during local community resource fairs. Nearly 180,000 individuals connected to essential services by dialing 211. More than 4,000 individuals and families received free tax preparation. More than 15,000 children received free immunization through a community-wide partnership. And more than 500 parents of children ages 3 to 5 attended educational workshops to develop an at-home plan to increase learning and capabilities. So therefore, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, I'd like to proclaim April 20th, 2011 as United Way of Southern Nevada Day in the City of Las Vegas. Congratulations. Okay, I'm going to let you say a couple of words, but I want to just make a couple other comments. Betsy, could you come up here, please? It was about a year ago, Goodwill, Goodwill, I'm on the board of Goodwill Southern Nevada, but it's United Way of Southern Nevada honoring today. They came to me about a year ago and said, "You know, we have a great partnership with the city of Las Vegas, but we need some help making sure that your city employees know who we are and how they can help us." So I sat down with our city manager and said, "Is there any way we can put together a United Way of Southern Nevada campaign in partnership with our city employees?" Well, we did that and I'm absolutely honored to say today that I'm really proud of our city of Las Vegas employees because they donated $65,000, which was 50% more than last year and that's in difficult times. So I know I speak for the mayor and the city council, we're very proud of our city employees for stepping up to the plate and helping an organization that does a lot for our community. I want to thank our city manager for getting involved in this. How about a nice round of applause for our city employees? And on top of that, United Way of Southern Nevada said that the department that had the biggest increase over last year, they were going to throw a pizza party on compliments of Costco. So I'm honored to say today that the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue won that award and raised in excess of $11,000. So Chief, would you please come up here and how about a nice round of applause for Las Vegas Fire and Rescue and what they did? And one other thing and then I'm going to give you all a couple of seconds to talk. Almost there. The city employee who is the coordinator between the city of Las Vegas and United Way of Southern Nevada works in our Human Resource Department, that's Meli Polito. Meli, would you please come up here? Like I said, she's responsible for making sure that there's a good partnership between the city of Las Vegas and United Way of Southern Nevada and I'm honored today to recognize Meli because she's been chosen by the United Way of Southern Nevada as the Nevada Coordinator of the Year for companies of 500 employees or more. So congratulations, Meli. So with that, I'm just going to pass the microphone around for 10, 15 seconds. Is that okay, Mayor? Okay.
I really don't know what's left to say other than a special thank you. On behalf of United Way, all their employees are volunteers and the thousands of people that are helped from this, in this community, from the fabulous employees of the city of Las Vegas. Thank you.
I think we work in a very generous environment. Our employees are extremely generous. Even though economic times were hitting hard for our employees, they pledged more than they did in 2010 and they also volunteered hundreds and hundreds of hours as part of their contribution to United Way. So I'm thankful for all the department contacts that helped us achieve that goal.
We just wanted to take a quick moment and recognize the men and women of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue as well as the rest of our city staff and employees. What a great organization it is. Not to be a little melodramatic, at a moment when people are seeking for some hope in their life, they dial those three magic numbers and our crews respond and begin trying to provide that for them. And in return for that, and again, their generosity continues, because of the logistics of Costco trying to get pizza to all our staff and crews on all three platoons, they in turn have donated that pizza to the Shade Tree Shelter. So today, Shade Tree, the moms and children at Shade Tree will benefit from that and we appreciate that.
I'd like to thank the councilmen for really taking it up a notch and expecting a little bit more. Our employees do such a fantastic job serving the community every day, but I think this dedication and this result shows that they go well beyond what they do in the 10 hours, four days a week that they provide services directly to you. They're also giving back to needy community programs on their off time, both volunteerism, spending their time helping, but also giving their hard-earned dollars back to the community for those who are less fortunate than we are. So it's our pleasure to work with you in partnership and we look forward to a few more years of really making that number look a lot better. So thank you very much.
Good, thanks. All right, now we're going to go to our regular agenda. Thank you.
Here's some extra script that may be helpful.
I don't think we have that much.
Mr. Mayor, there's a young lady who has to wave to you.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, doing good.
Good, that's what I like to hear. We'll go to item number 13. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken or held abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor, pro tem.
At this time, Your Honor, there's no items.
All right, then we'll go on to item 14, approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of March 16th, 2011.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move to approve minutes. If there's no addition or deletion, please.
All right, there's a motion. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items 15 through 37 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to bring item number 21 forward, please, just for a vote.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, we'll bring 21 forward. Do you want to make a motion on the other ones first?
Yes, Your Honor, I make a motion to approve items 15 through 37, except for 21, with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that motion, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 21 is approval of award of modification number 5 to contract number 060044-SB, Architect and Associated Services for the Post Office Courthouse Rehabilitation Project, now known as the Las Vegas Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement, located at 300 Stewart Avenue. Officer, the city manager, award recommended to WRL of Nevada. And I believe, it's just a matter of voting on this. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor. I make a motion to approve this item with all conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 38 is a report to satisfy annual requirement under ordinance 6067 regarding spaying, neutering of certain animals.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Tim Shattler, City of Las Vegas, Detention and Enforcement. I'm here this morning, along with several community stakeholders, to give you an update on the city's mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to just quickly go over what the ordinance is, kind of how we got here today, and then I'm going to invite them up to speak to you as well because I think it's important for you to get from their perspective. They've put a lot of hard work into this and let you know as well what's going on out in the community. So I'll first take you back to November of 2009. That's when the city of Las Vegas enacted this ordinance. We were the second jurisdiction in the valley to do so. North Las Vegas was the first. In 2010, the county and Henderson also followed us. So right now, all of the local jurisdictions within the valley are, or do have a spay and neuter ordinance. And why that's important is because we all have the same goal in mind, that's to reduce the number of animals that go into our shelters and ultimately, and more importantly, the number of animals that we continue year upon year upon year to euthanize. And that's why we came up with this ordinance and why we think this ordinance is very important. So in 2009, we passed our ordinance. Our ordinance basically says that if you live within the city, if you have a dog or a cat over the age of four months, you have to have it spayed or neutered. Now, there are a number of exemptions in the ordinance that we came up with and this ordinance wasn't one that the city just came up with and pushed out to the public. We worked with our partners in the community, with other members of the community, to come up with some exemptions to this. Some of the exemptions, and I think more, the more important ones that we did get to were the dog fanciers, the cat fanciers, breeders, and professional animal handlers. Now, when we came up with this ordinance, they had kind of an issue with that because there are certain things within those communities that they don't want to have to spay or neuter their animals. And so we worked with the community to come up with this ordinance and as well, we gave the constituents of Las Vegas about a four-month timeframe to come into compliance with the ordinance. So during that time, what we did is we educated the public. We worked with KCLV, came up with a public service announcement. We came up with a poster that we posted in the dog groomers shops, pet stores, and the veterinarians' offices. We got a lot of coverage in the news media, both the print and television, and so the word had gotten out. And I think probably the most important part of what we do from the animal control perspective is what our officers do. On a day-to-day basis, they educate the public. And we, to this day, even though we've been enforcing the ordinance since April of 2010, we still educate the public on this ordinance as well as many other things. So April 2010, we started enforcing the ordinance. Since we've been enforcing the ordinance, we've only cited 56 times on it, which is about 8% of the violations that we cited on in animal control. So it's a very small percentage. That percentage are used... That percentage are usually the ones that are the most serious in nature, people that we've warned for it before and that. But I think one of the initial concerns from the public is that we're going to be out there knocking on doors and citing people for not having their animals spayed and neutered. That's not the case. Complaints, I know that was another issue that we had spoken about at the very beginning. We got some initial complaints, which we would think from most ordinances, and we continue to still get complaints, but I think as we educate people as to why we're doing what we're doing, I think they understand that it is an important ordinance to have. I think with that, I want to invite up the group that I've assembled here to talk to you. There's only four of them, we should make it pretty quick and then be on our way.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shattler.
Good morning, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, Christine Robinson, the executive director of the Animal Foundation. Thank you, Tim. I just wanted to, I want to read you the Animal Foundation's mission statement. It's brief. "In the battle to eliminate pet overpopulation, the Animal Foundation believes community is essential, education is empowerment, and action is everything. Our mission is to inspire and enable people to join the fight against pet overpopulation." So let me tell you what I love about that mission statement. Unlike, sadly, so many of our community's social issues here, this one is fixable. I've said this before, it's resolvable. We have the tools to resolve this community problem, and one of those tools is you all implementing a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance with your colleagues across the valley. You know, Tim mentioned, or he and I have talked, that it's difficult in the short period of time that this ordinance has been in place to meaningfully analyze and measure any kind of statistics and trends, positive or negative, but I can tell you a couple of things. One, we are certainly not headed in the wrong direction. We are not making this problem worse through this ordinance by any means. And I would go so far as to say, anecdotally, we're absolutely starting to make the problem better. And I'm just going to give you a couple of numbers. 220 impounded animals were returned from the shelter to their owners with a spay-neuter surgery, as opposed to nine animals, meeting the same criteria for the reporting period of August 2008 to November of 2009, reflecting a 5,700% increase. I think my math's correct. Again, it's been, this has been in place for a year, it's anecdotal, but 520 versus nine. I'll also tell you that 572 animals were returned to their owners with a microchip, as opposed to 39 for that same period. Again, a significant increase, all of those things together, whether it's a mandatory microchip, helping us return animals effectively to their owners, or our spay-neuter program. So, again, we're delighted with the way it's going so far. I know my partners here want to say something as well, but before they do, I wanted to say that, you know, I used to say this when I was involved in air quality, when I was a county employee, and I say the same thing here, because it's equally as relevant. A set of, 120 employees and a set of regulations don't fix these kinds of community problems. People changing their behavior, we taking responsibility to educate our community and its citizens, and working together with our really strong partners are the way to get the job done. And I want this council, and equally as important, perhaps more, your citizens to know that animal welfare issues are an area and industry where folks do a lot of battle, and that's really sad, and I'm sorry to see that happen as much as it does. But I will tell you, in this community, I hope that you are proud that people like the owner of the Sunrise Medical Clinic, Dr. Henderson, Karen Lane, the executive director of the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, Harold Vasco, the president of Heaven Can Wait. We all have different roles that we play in the community to get this job done, and we are working together as partners to do that. And I think as much as anything, that says a lot, and it speaks volumes about where this community is headed in terms of resolving this problem. With that, after I invite you to our Best in Show event, our annual Best in Show event on May 1st at the Orleans Arena, where Mayor Goodman and his wife Carolyn have graciously agreed to co-chair that event on May 1st, please join us. Rita Rudner is hosting, it's going to be wonderful. I'd like to invite all of you and the citizens of Las Vegas to join us for that event, as well as let you know, and I think you all know this, that our public spay-neuter clinic is open for business, and all of that information, prices, and hours, can be found on our website at www animalfoundation.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, welcome. Thank you for lending me talk. My name is Dave Henderson. I'm the medical director for Heaven Can Wait Low Cost Spay and Neuter Clinic. I've also been a private practitioner for 30 years in southern Nevada, and I think what this ordinance has allowed us to do is actually hit the segment of the population that creates the problem. You know, what we need to do is target the animals that need to be spayed and neutered, and that's what this ordinance has done. And I don't have any statistics, but anecdotally, when I'm doing surgery at the low-cost spay-and-neuter clinic, at least three to five people a day that have been mandated by numerous jurisdictions, both county, city, North Las Vegas, and Henderson, come there, and these are the people that have been causing the problem for the past 30 years, and in 30 years, I have not been able to get them to sterilize their animals. And this ordinance has allowed us to target them, and I think that eventually it's going to pay off dividends.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes. I just want to, I guess, put on record that the reason I supported this spay-and-neuter was because of Bill Henderson. He's been my family dog doctor for a long time, and a personal friend. And every time I have questions or concerns about animals, when we were building the new animal shelter down there, I went to Dr. Henderson and asked him, "What do we do? What do we do? What do we do?" So he's been kind of been my mentor to learn more about animals I love. So, Bill, thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
My name's Harold Vasco. I'm president of Heaven Can Wait Animal Society, and we're certainly grateful that we have this mandatory spay and neuter. It certainly helps. We have a long way to go. We just put in, just so you know, we just put an ad on the news, on TV, Univision and Channel 3, and they ran ads that will do the first 200 callers that have a pit bull or chihuahua for free. Every one of those ads, we put at the very end, "After all, it's the law." So we are educating people now that it has to get done, and hopefully this is the right direction. And it's a long haul, but I think we're scratching the surface, and I think eventually we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Karen Lane, president of the Las Vegas Valley Humane Society, and I just want to let you know that we do have low-cost and no-cost spay and neuters available to those people who cannot afford them. We've been doing a lot of work with residents in the city of Las Vegas, as well as the other jurisdictions. We provide a low-cost spay and neuter clinic, and about 34% of those spay and neuters are done either below cost or at no cost for residents who cannot afford to pay for them. And I can also assure you that Harold Vasco with the Heaven Can Wait also has programs within their clinic. So we are making sure that those people who have issues are being assisted. Thank you for this ordinance, and we are going to continue to work and make a difference in the number of impounds that are going into the shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have one more comment?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Again, I want to thank those that are involved in this program, but I do ask a favor. Let's look at the cats, too, because in my neighborhood, I've got feral cats running everywhere, all over my ward, and I know that it's just going to keep getting worse and worse unless we can get a little bit of, I guess, head start on these, because we've got to do something about the cats in the town, the city.
Councilman Reese, actually, I did go over to your neighborhood, and I did run into a couple of feeders. We tried to work with them, and I've guessed some of those feeders have moved, we'll certainly go back there. I will say that one of the things that didn't get done as a part of this ordinance, that we do want to work on, is dealing with the feral cats. You do have colonies now. We're trying to make some changes to the ordinance, working in concert with the city, with the Clark County. We think some of those things would be beneficial, and that we might be able to resolve the problem. It is an issue right now, but we really do believe that we're going to have to, you know, deal with that feral cat ordinance in order to try to make more of an impact on the cat situation. There's no doubt about that.
I've got a couple more months here, and I guarantee you, I'll do all I can to help you, because it really is a problem.
Well, and if you'll let us know, you'll give me some more addresses on that street, we'll go back and take a look at them as well for you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Very good. Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't believe it's been a year and a half ago that we actually did this, and what was interesting for me is this actually came before the recommending committee first, and Councilman Barlow and I heard it, and it was one of the most passionate discussions I've ever heard on a topic. I mean, people were either very for the ordinance, or completely against the ordinance, or they wanted some stipulations in between on certain topics, and it seems like three things primarily came up that were topics of discussion, and you mentioned a couple of them, Chief, but I wanted to ask a question on those three and see who can answer them. The first one is, there was a lot of discussion about whether the spay or neutering should be at four months or six months, and we had a lot on that, and we ended up going with four months. And I'm just curious, has there been a public outcry, or, you know, people that are really upset that a four-month-old animal is getting spayed or neutered?
There is, medically, there is absolutely no difference between four months and six months, and that has been proven. The six-month standard in veterinary medicine was set 50 years ago, and it was absolutely arbitrary. What age should we spay and neuter? Six months. Why not? Why? It's arbitrary.
So you haven't had any complaints?
There is no difference medically at four months to six months, and it's just misinformation and myth that people were upset about it, and have I heard a problem? No, I have not.
Very good. The second question, if I can, Mayor. There was a lot of discussion about exceptions. We need an exception for this, and we did end up building in exceptions to spay and neuter. I'm just curious, how many exceptions were granted? What percentage of them? Was that a big issue with spay and neutering?
I can just speak from my personal practice. I have written medical deference for probably a dozen patients. I'm also at Heaven Can Wait, you know, spay and neuter clinic, and I tell people, you know, when I see a patient that's not medically fit to be spayed or neutered, I tell them to go to their regular vet, get a written letter for animal control that exempts them from the ordinance, and, you know, problem solved. And I probably have seen, you know, 30 or 40 cases where it wasn't the best medical decision for the patient at the time.
Just to briefly add to that, and I can't believe I left out our buddy, Rich Molinari of your staff, animal control, when I talked about our partners, and we work really, really well with your group. Thank you. We, particularly in the city of Las Vegas, have a very good relationship where we're able to talk to one another when something like that comes up. If there's any kind of issue with a constituent at all, for there's some reason they can't, don't want to, are concerned, they want to go to their own veterinarian, exception, 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 while I will tell you, that does not actually happen often. It does happen, and when it does, we resolve it. We allow that to happen, and then it's followed up with your animal control folks, and no issues there, I mean, virtually none.
Very good. And my third question is, and you mentioned, as Chief...
I have one thing to add to that, too. When I was talking to, when Chris was speaking to Rich, he said we've had about 150 exceptions that we've done, and those are mostly for the dog fancier, cat fancier, that group. But there's other exceptions, incapable of breeding, medically unsuited to undergo the surgery, if they're a law enforcement search and rescue, or a service animal. So there's a number of different exceptions that we have granted.
Great, thank you. And then my third question is, again, there was a lot of discussion about the city marshals are going to be knocking down doors, and they're going to be out there enforcing this, I mean, they were going to go crazy over this. And you mentioned 56 citations. I'm just curious, what was a typical citation that you would give for something like this? How would you come about giving a citation?
Well, generally, that would be for like, repeat, you know, repeat having to speak to somebody about it. It's not just, we don't just go out and, it's the first time we've ever spoken to you, and we write you a citation on it. So generally, they're more the exception rather than the rule on it. We're still in an education mode with this as well, which we are all the time.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, actually, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Gary Reese for bringing the feral cat issue to the forefront, because I know my neighbors and I have been dealing with that for, I would say, over a year now, and just, what is today, Wednesday? Monday, my neighbor came over and asked, "What should he do with the cats, or the cat that just had babies in the back of his boat?" And so I asked him to contact the animal control office, but there are a number of cats now having babies in our neighborhood, and so I'm not sure how we go about handling that, as far as, you know, do we capture the cats ourselves and wait for animal control to come, or, you know, just pretty much some guidance that I can take back to my neighbors so that we can assist in the process of the stray cats that are inundated in our neighborhood.
Yeah, what we're going to be doing, and Karen kind of spoke to it there briefly, is Karen and I have been in recent communication about the feral cat issue. We're going to assemble a group, which many of these people that are here today are going to be a part of that group, and look at our ordinance and do some changes to that to help us, help you in your neighborhoods with this issue.
I appreciate that, and also I want to give kudos to my colleague Steve Ross for bringing this item to the forefront and allowing other elected officials, not only here at the city of Las Vegas, but other jurisdictions, to participate in these conversations and moving the ordinance forward. So, thank you, Councilman Ross.
And Tuesday, James from Councilman Ross's office was an integral part of this as well, in the drafting of this and getting it on.
If I may, Mayor?
Certainly.
I think what's in reality here, we knew we had a problem in the community, we put everybody in a room, you all remember that day, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate all of you coming together, both sides, and Councilman, you're right, it was very passionate on both sides. But I think it's working, and I think, and I thank all of you for taking an active part in making this a better community for our families, because we love our pets. I love my dogs, and we want others to do the same. So congratulations on what you're doing, Councilman. Thank you for that, I appreciate it, and shoot, Mayor, keep on doing what you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Robbins, one more time for the Dog Show. That's going to be on the 30th, that's a Sunday?
May 1st, May 1st. No, don't show up on the 30th, you'll be very early. May 1st, the Orleans Arena, Rita Rudner and the mayor and his wife Carolyn co-chairing the event.
Okay. What time is that going to be?
But, I'm sorry, while you all are big stars, the 50 or so adoptable animals, dogs that will be there looking for forever homes, they're the big stars.
Okay. And what time will we start?
Brunch at 11:30, if you've sponsored a table. Show starts at 1 for the general public.
Very good.
It's going to be a good time.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question? We had a situation where we were trying to get some of those boxes that catch the feral cats, and the county, as I understand, provides those to their residents. But when we tried to get it in the city, we didn't do it, we don't provide, and the county said that they wouldn't provide unless it was the county, and I'm just wondering what we might be able to do to help with that situation, because I was told it might be helpful.
We can get those on a limited basis. We have a staffing thing going on right now with the animal control. The answer are about 30,000 calls for service a year, and so our supervisor's actually been out in the field answering calls, just like the rest of the officers have, and so he's the one that does that. He says that we can do it, we just, if you'd let us know where that is, we can make that happen.
Is this new that you can do it, or have you been doing it for a while?
No, we have been doing it. Yeah.
Wow. Okay, because we were told...
Yeah, over the last couple of years, we've just been doing it on a limited basis.
I see, I see.
But we can do it.
So then we just have to push that that limited basis includes what our needs are. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 39, discussion of possible action regarding a Second Amendment to the disposition and development agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Resort Gaming Group LLC for the purpose of amending the expiration date of the due diligence period and not requiring the developer to pay the due diligence extension deposits for the site located Stewart Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard. This is in Ward 5. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This is simply to extend the due diligence for the project with Resort Gaming Group and Zappos. In addition, we are recommending that we waive two extension deposits in the agreement, and the reason for that is that we would rather have that money go into the planning for the project, discussions with Resort Gaming Group, Zappos, and Amazon for the project are going extremely well, and this will help keep the project moving forward. Staff recommends approval.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Arndt? All right, this is Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Items 40 and 41. 40 is discussion and possible action regarding a settlement agreement by Decatur Shopping Center Associates and Nevada Limited Partnership, City of Las Vegas Municipal Corporation, the state of Nevada, City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, a public body, and Alpha Omega Strategies LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company pertaining to the real property located at 1501 North Decatur Boulevard. 41 is discussion and possible action regarding the First Amendment to Fourth Amended and Restated Disposition and Development Agreement by and between the City of Las Vegas, a municipal corporation in the state of Nevada, the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, a public body, and Alpha Omega Strategies LLC pertaining to the disposition of real property located at 1501 North Decatur Boulevard. These items are in Ward 5 and related to each other as well as redevelopment agency items heard this morning, items 6 and 7. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. As you indicated, we heard these items this morning on the redevelopment agency and I would like to incorporate those remarks into the record. Staff is recommending approval and I'd like to just highlight that there are no city funds being used for the settlement agreement. This is refunding the developer's own money posted as a performance deposit and earnest money deposit in the development agreement and that is referenced in both the settlement agreement and the First Amendment to the Fourth Amended and Restated Disposition and Development Agreement. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Arndt? All right, hearing none. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Very good. That's on number 40. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. And 41, please.
Yes, move to follow staff's recommendation, subject to all conditions.
Thanks. Please vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Item 42 is discussion and possible action regarding the denial of an ice cream truck license for James D. Williams doing business as Straight A Ice Cream at 1100 Surles Avenue. This is in Ward 5. Ms. Meyer, is the applicant present?
I do not see him here, Your Honor, but he did have a certified letter and it was signed for, that he was supposed to appear today.
And when did he receive that?
On April 13th.
Did he sign for it personally?
No, a Michael Harris signed for it on his behalf.
Do we know who Michael Harris is?
We do not.
Just worried about something like this, whether he actually got notice of it.
Mayor, I would like to move to hold this in advance for two weeks to see if we can actually make contact with the gentleman so that we can move this agenda item forward accordingly.
Okay, that's the motion. It's motion to obey for two weeks. What's the date?
May 4th.
May 4th. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Item 43 is R. 17-2011, discussion and possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency regarding the disposition and development agreement between the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency and Las Vegas ICE LLC for the sale of real property generally located at the southeast corner of Clark Avenue and Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward 3. And this item is related to the RDA item this morning, item number 4. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item was heard at the Redevelopment Agency as item number 4 and by reference would like to incorporate the remarks into the record for the council item. This is concluding a process with the GSA for the Immigration and Customs Enforcement building to be developed by the developer on what we know as the Bulldog Site. The item is in order. ESCRO is due to close October of 2011 and construction to start shortly thereafter. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, Councilman Barlow?
Councilman Reese.
Councilman Reese, pardon me.
Thank you, sir.
Saying Barlow, Barlow, Barlow.
I want to follow the redevelopment agencies. Yes, vote on this also, but I have to make a comment. This property, to me, has been very important to the city of Las Vegas for our downtown redevelopment and I really truly believe this time we are going to get a project that is going to help continue the thrust we have in developing something positive downtown. And we was told this morning by Mr. Biagotti that he's going to start construction at this location hopefully by August the 1st because he's got 12 months to finish this project. And the thing that, you know, we've been talking about for so long has been creating jobs and it seems to me like the only ones creating any jobs in the city of Las Vegas are in Clark County is the city of Las Vegas. And so I want to thank staff, Bill. We've had a lot of people wanting to build on this corner at this location because it is a prime location. But the project we're getting there is going to fit there very nicely. It's going to help, like I say, the downtown businesses that are already there continue to try to make a foothold and grab hold and just keep getting bigger. So I want to follow staff's recommendation to approve this item as well as the RDAs.
Very good. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Item number 44 is Bill Number 2011-18, makes minor adjustments to the licensing and zoning treatment of beer wine cooler cultural establishments. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2011-18, First Amendment, in order to make minor adjustments to licensing and zoning treatment for beer wine cooler cultural establishments and provide related matters. Your Honor, before this is considered, Mr. Steed is here to explain a few things that are in the First Amendment.
Very good. Mr. Steed?
Yes, thank you. The recommending committee yesterday recommended that we add a new section, which I've included, Section 8. You should have a copy in front of you. This bill has both zoning and licensing aspects to it and the zoning parts of it were drafted as amendments to our existing zoning code. As you'll know, as you'll remember, a new zoning or Unified Development Code goes into effect next month. And so this Section 8 instructs the Planning Department to make sure that the changes made by this ordinance are conformed to the provisions of the Unified Development Code. We recommend approval.
All right, thank you very much. Have you read that yet, Mr. Turbick? All right, very good. Do you have a motion, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Excuse me?
We have a question.
Certainly.
And we've probably just heard the answer. We probably just need to look at the code. Juanita Clark, on behalf of Charles Neighborhood Preservation, we wanted to know what the definition of a cultural establishment is for our city and where we could find that information.
Mr. Turbick, are you able to respond? Mr. Steed?
There's a definition of a beer wine cultural establishment, which is the only definition we need. There's not a definition of cultural establishment because it's not a term that's used.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I believe the council made a motion, correct?
Yes.
All right, let's vote on it, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 45 is Bill Number 2011-20, authorizes installment purchase agreements with Bank of America Leasing and Capital LLC for taxable direct pay clean renewable energy bonds and taxable direct pay qualified energy conservation bonds for the purpose of financing energy conservation and renewable energy projects. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thanks.
Councilman, Bill Number 2011-20, in order to authorize an installment purchase agreements for taxable direct pay clean renewable energy bonds and taxable direct pay qualified energy conservation bonds for the purpose of financing energy conservation and renewable energy projects, authorizes the execution of the agreements and other documents related thereto and providing the effective date hereof.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, move for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 46, Bill 2011-19, is eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we'll move on to new bills now. Yes. Items 47 through 49, Bills 2011-21 through 2011-23, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, May the 3rd. Mr. Turbick, will you read those, please?
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Bill Number 2011-21, in order concerning the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number 1485, Alter Drive Landscape Maintenance, FY 2012, providing for the payment of the cost and expenses of the maintaining, maintaining street and pre-ification projects, assessing the cost of the maintenance against the accessible lots, tracks, and parcels of land benefited by said maintenance, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, prescribing details in connection herewith. Bill Number 2011-22, in order concerning the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number 1516, Fremont Street Maintenance District, Las Vegas Boulevard to 8th Street, providing for the payment of the cost and expenses of a commercial area revitalization project, assessing the cost of the project against the accessible lots, tracks, and parcels of land benefited by said improvements, ratifying, approving, and confirming all action previously taken, and prescribing details in connection therewith. And finally, Bill Number 2011-23, in order to update the land use and rural neighborhood preservation element of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan to be consistent with the city's new Unified Development Code and provide related matters.
All right, thank you very much. Will you be available, Councilman Barlow, on May the 3rd?
Yes, I will be.
Very good. Councilman Anthony, will you be available?
Yes, sir.
Good. Then the two of you will be assigned those bills and before we move on to item number 50, would one of you youngsters like to be a spokesperson and tell us what this group is? Come on up, please. Tell us your name first, please.
Hi, my name is John Pepito from Valley High School. I'm here with my second-period AP government class for our quarter four project. We're here to observe how the city council works and just how we're incorporating our knowledge of government.
That's good. Very good. Do you want to introduce your classmate, please?
To my, to my right here is Kathy Davis, Christina Molina, Danica Atienza, Nevelyn Arukon, Brian Hera, and Phoebe Martinez.
Terrific. And what have you learned here today?
Um, I'm really, really nervous. It's just that so many ordinance, like I didn't even hear about the spay neutering ordinance. I have never heard of that before, you know. I think it's just great that, you know, I think kids should just come in here and learn about all the inner workings of our city.
Well, you're always welcome and I appreciate the fact you were so attentive today. And we have a picture of me with you, so everybody will know you were in fact here today.
Yeah.
You know, I want to praise you guys for being here today. Isn't this spring break?
Yes, it is.
You came here today on spring break.
Yeah, well...
That's pretty awesome, isn't it?
We care about our city.
No, that's terrific. Thank you.
Glad you're being here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a wonderful program called Batteries Included and check into that because you may be able to find a job that will be available to you as an intern this summer with somebody down here and that might be a lot of fun and a very educational experience for you. That's the Batteries Included program. Okay. Ms. Fretwell?
Yes, sir.
I have to confer with Councilman Ross. We'll never make it work. All right, we may as well go into executive session. This is item number 50, closed session upon duly... Well, we need a motion to discuss, we need a motion to go into closed session to discuss labor issues. May I have that, please?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries and we'll go into closed session and then we'll be in recess until, I'd say, 1 o'clock. Thank you.
We want to thank you for allowing us to observe.
Yeah, because, yeah, thank you for allowing us to observe like the inner workings of our local government. It's really fascinating.
Terrific. You were very, very open. You were very attentive. We loved having you down here. Don't be strange.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like it is. It's okay, as long as you get something done.
Actually, I better visit the ladies' room before I leave. I have a problem in that area, too. There's not much in my body that isn't broke.
That's good news for us.
Just follow me, Mayor. Follow me in your book.
Good afternoon. Can we take our seats, please? Attorneys, attorneys, can we take our seats, please? Thank you. We'd like to excuse the mayor and Councilman Ross and Councilman Barlow for a few minutes. They'll be with us a, I think, pretty soon anyhow. Anyhow, we'd like to call this afternoon's session into order. Are there any, item number 51, is there any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and the applicant wish to be strictly held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time? Councilman Wilson, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem, item number 62, SUP 40739, applicant, Ace Sloan Company, owner BF Trust. There's been a request to obey this item to our May 4th, 2011 meeting.
Are there any other items? Can we have a motion, please?
Move to obey it till the May 4th meeting.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions on the motion? Bring it in. Cast your votes. Post, please. twenty because we have to have the staff correct. Item number forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
And then item number forty-three, the mayor abstained on one item that we took action on and we need to bring this one back, so we're going to trail it until the mayor gets here. So we're going to, we're going to put it forward now. Any other questions on the motions?
I'm sorry, are we doing a rescission on forty-five or what are we doing on forty-five?
We're bringing it back.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem.
We've got to bring it back first.
Okay.
Sorry, attorney. Any other questions on these motions? Cast your vote, please. Cast your vote. Post, please. Where's Vicki when you need her? Okay, vote, vote again, please.
On the same motion?
Yes.
Reconsider, hold on. There we go. Okay, now we got it.
Motion carries. Whoa, hold it.
You can just verbally.
Yeah, let's just, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing the motion carries. Item number forty-five, bill number two thousand and eleven dash twenty, Mr. Steed, is he here? Could you explain to us what we're doing on this item, please?
Yes, if you're going to reconsider this item, there was any, a First Amendment prepared by bond counsel that we had let slip through the cracks and so we would like the vote that was taken this morning rescinded or reconsidered, however you'd like to do that. And then the First Amendment simply makes a few changes like adding the name of, or the title of the finance director, change the word agreement to agreements in a couple of places, changes that don't materially change the ordinance.
Councilman Barlow, do you understand that?
No, but I would go with the recommendation of our city attorney.
Okay. And is that, is that the motion?
That would be my motion.
Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. And we will trail item number forty-three until the mayor gets here. Okay, item fifty-two is a public hearing and possible action to consider the report of expenses recovered costs for abatement of nuisance located at four oh one Antelope Way in the amount of three thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents, general fund and assess a maximum of fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Property owner is Bank New York Mellon. This is in Ward one, Councilman Tarkanian's Ward, and the staff is present. Mr. Smith, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The pervasive background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired American Demolition to remove all trash and debris and remove all high weeds and grass and apply an herbicide. To date, there have been nine inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow dot com is a hundred and eight thousand dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a four hundred and sixty-five dollar invoice for American demolition in addition to other fees assessed for a total of three thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents and consider assessing a maximum of fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars in daily civil penalties. And just for the record, we have been in contact with the bank. The bank has been very responsive to our request. They have agreed that they will pay the three thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents and this problem took place prior to the bank taking, taking back the possession of the property. And since that time, they have just gentlemen in place to help maintain the property, keep it and keep it clean, neat and clean.
Any questions or comments by staff or by the council?
Could I ask, you're saying that the bank then was not responsible for any of the mess that we had in any of the fifty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars?
That is correct. And I have talked, been talking with Ryan Curtis from Sky Hill, which is Bank of America's maintenance department that they hire to maintain these properties. And ever since they've taken possession of the property, they have been in contact with my office and assured me that they would continue to maintain it and that the check for the three thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents would be paid within the next three to four weeks.
Okay, this, is it Bank of America or Bank New York Mellon?
It's Bank of America.
Actually, it's, it's Bank of America.
Sir, sir.
I'm sorry, my name is Eric Morris. I'm with BAC Field Services, a mortgage servicing corporation that was taking, actually managing, I mean servicing the mortgage. Mortgage is to Bank of New York Mellon, but the mortgage servicing is BAC Bank of America and that's how I got involved, so.
Well, the people I've been in contact with is Bank of America.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's me, but again, they're not the true mortgage holder of the property, that's all.
Okay.
A question to you, Mr. Smith. Have you, have you talked to them about paying ten percent of the daily civil penalties?
I have not. They, they have just asked me to relay that information that they would have a representative here and asked for me to relay that information.
We've been, we've been pretty thorough, though, in asking those. We, I understand that the difficulties we've had and we're trying to work that out, but again, though, we go to a lot of time and cost and I don't think ten percent of the daily civil penalties is too much to ask, so that's just my opinion.
And that would be at your discretion.
Yeah. Any other questions, Councilwoman?
Well, I would, I would agree with you if there's any responsibility on the part of the bank. Now, evident, you know, Bank of America evidently is handling things for the other bank.
Correct.
But the other bank owned it. And did they own it during any part of the time when we were fixing up and sending out notices? Does anyone know when the, because if they did, then I feel they should pay ten percent. If they were not involved whatsoever until after the work was done...
They were the bank on record that held the mortgage at the time that the prior occupants lived in the home. The Bank of New York Mellon was the mortgage holder of that property. When they vacated the property and after we did the cleanup and they had, that's when Bank of America started contacting them.
Yeah, but Bank of America is working for the other bank right now.
Correct. I'm sorry. Yeah, but that's correct to the point that the property became bank-owned, but the records I found out yesterday as of October fourth of last year.
As of October fourth?
That's when the bank was, yeah, when it was given back to the bank as a real bank-owned property.
So did you ever send a notice to the bank?
Yes, we did.
You did send a notice to the bank. Well, did you send the notice before you cleaned up?
We noticed the bank June twenty-eighth of two thousand and ten.
So they must have been owner of record at that time.
No, no, that, I understand the code officer was still working with the owner of the property at that time. Again, we were never aware of the violation prior to that as far as our end goes. I have a newer violation.
Well, I know Bank of America wasn't. I'm just wondering if the other bank was. That's what I'm...
I guess what I'm saying is it became a bank-owned property October and I've spoke with the code officer and it sounds like Devin's got, we, I'm not sure if all it's as clear, is it, we, this property was, I believe, abated in November? Is that correct?
I believe it was.
See that, you...
The abatement was complete October twenty-third of two thousand and ten.
Okay, see, the thing is that the property, we were, anybody involved in that property wasn't able to do any cleanup on that property because of the ownership issues until after October fourth. So that would have been the soonest anyone from either Bank of America Mortgage Servicing or Bank New York Mellon could have dealt with this issue.
Would be October twenty-fourth.
Fourth, excuse me.
October fourth.
Yes.
Councilman, please. Just a quick question. Is this a foreclosure?
I, it's bank-owned.
I mean, at some point in time, the bank learns that they're not getting payments anymore. Now, this is a whole global discussion we could have, right? To just say that from October on, the bank should be responsible, I bet you back in April, May, June, or July, the bank knew that the homeowner wasn't making payments, so theoretically the bank should step in right then and take care of the property.
Actually, the bank steps in when the property is declared, is verified as vacant. Otherwise, it's trespassing. Bank can't step in until they know for a fact that the property is vacant.
And I can appreciate that because even though they're not getting payments, they're not the owner of record.
Yeah, legal owner of record is the person who's on the deed.
We'd like to say the bank should be responsible, but theoretically, they can't enter the property to remedy the nuisance until they take over ownership.
Correct. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may just...
Yes.
In this whole proceeding, I know those questions come up before, sometime in June, we started seeing that there was a foreclosure proceeding starting to take place and as soon as we can identify the bank, that's why we started notifying the bank that we were taking action against the property. So that's one of the things as we see...
And when was that?
June twenty-eighth of two thousand and ten.
So in June twenty-eighth, you started notifying the bank that you were going to take action?
Yes.
So that means they were aware of it?
They were aware.
They need, they were aware that action needed to be taken.
But I'm not sure, and this would be a legal question, at what point can they step on the property and abate the problem themselves?
Well, my esteemed lawyer sitting next to me is telling me legally they might not be able to do anything, but I will tell you, I feel very strongly, and I understand if they legally, they couldn't, but the problem I have with the Bank of America and other instances too and other banks is that they let this property sit there and deteriorate and they own it. And they know it's deteriorating and the people haven't paid, they know they're owning it. And in, in the meantime, then the other, other parts of the neighborhood start to deteriorate, even people who aren't losing their home. They lose hope that they're going to have a nice neighborhood again. So I'll go along with this, Devin, but let me ask you something else. I did not receive, as far as I know, the, you know how you used to send us a separate clipped, yeah, you got them, huh? Well, okay, usually I can go over those and save all these questions. I will, having this sympathy...
This is public hearing, so let the public speak, please. Then we have the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item?
Thank you. Todd Farley, two forty, North nineteenth Street. Two things. Number one, this may be the owner of record, but nobody really knows who owns these properties. These things are so convoluted. And Councilman Wilson, as a lawyer, I'm sure that you are certainly aware of a mortgage document that states that the, that the bank can walk in on that property at any time during that loan, any time. That's, any mortgage document that I've ever seen has that. And I just do not think that we should have any mercy on these people, except if they keep those trees up, and there's two nice mesquite trees, I believe it was. If they keep those nice, you know, maybe you can work with them. Other than that, show no mercy.
Thank you.
That for Anthony. I'm, I'm, I know there's a budget crisis going on and, and, and I, I, I believe when taxes, when tax day comes, we, we, we should, we should, we should kind of like watch that budget and, 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 and watch what we do with our mortgage because, I'm, 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 because a lot of people are getting, I'm like, getting out on the streets more and I don't think that's what even happened.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Close public hearing, Councilwoman, motion, please.
You need Tarkanian's?
Yes, please.
It's all right.
Okay.
My, I'm sorry, I somehow did not get those this time. Usually I get them and they're very complete and I appreciate it. So that's why I'm asking these questions, however, and that is, we're saying they were notified in June and they're saying they couldn't go on the property. Is that what you're saying?
Technically, that is, it's a legal matter that I can't answer, but that's the way I understand it. When I work with properties, it's much more difficult for us to approach or work on a property prior to the foreclosure legally taking place as opposed to after it's bank-owned. After it's bank-owned, we're usually one hundred percent on these properties, try to take responsibility for them. Obviously, things happen, but that's part of my job. We do monitor these properties once they're bank-owned. Prior to being bank-owned, a lot of times, you know, there's, the only way to know these properties need attention is either being brought by the attention of code enforcement or a serious delinquency on the property.
Well, I, I really believe the banks and the situations the banks are now and the situation people are because of the banks. I, I really believe the bank should be more aggressive in being sure that the properties that are coming to them and they know are coming to them because they almost give no wedge room either way, really, truly. I'm going to move for repayment of the cost of three thousand six hundred and six dollars and seventy-five cents for the work that has been done and an additional twenty-five hundred for a civil penalty. And, and just ask them, please be more aggressive next time because this is the biggest complaint we're having in neighborhoods now, this type of thing.
No, yes, I agree and I, no, and with, you know, to respect, I mean, we are working, personally, I am one of the major representatives here in Las Vegas, working with code enforcement.
Right.
I work with all the code officers, we do what we can, we have client issues, but we are doing, I mean, I'm trying to catch up with this, we've done a lot better in the last year. I know we can do better.
Right, we can. And if Bank New York Mellon owns this, then I hope that Bank of America will tell them why we're doing this.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be detailed, believe me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
Any question on the motion? Here you go, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item fifty-three is a public hearing and possible action to consider the report of expenses recovered costs for abatement of nuisance located at fifty-six oh eight Heron Avenue in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents and excess a maximum of sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties. Again, this is a bank-owned property, HSBC USA N A TRS. Never heard of that bank. This is also in Ward one. Devin, please.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. The pervasive background is the condition of the property was a public hazard and attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired Luna's Construction to secure all structures, remove all trash and debris and remove all high weeds and grass. To date, there have been eight inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow dot com is a hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include a six hundred and eighteen dollar and fifty cent invoice for Luna's Construction in addition to other fees assessed for a total of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents and consider assessing a maximum of sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in daily civil penalties.
This is, is anybody from the bank here? Seeing anyone, this is a public hearing, anyone who probably wishes to speak on this item? Seeing anyone with close to public hearing? Councilwoman?
Again, Devin, knowing that this was going to be foreclosed upon and everything, did they have enough notification before you did the renovation to do it themselves? Or did they leave us hanging?
Abatement was complete September thirteen of last year of two thousand and ten. And as far as we show, the property has not, they're still showing it is...
Devin, please.
Yes, Mayor Protem. The purpose and background and condition of the property was a public hazard and attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired Luna's Construction to secure all structures, remove all trash and debris, and remove all high weeds and grass. To date, there have been eight inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow.com is $108,500. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses to include a $618.50 invoice for Luna's Construction, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $2,953.20, and consider assessing a maximum of $66,550 in daily civil penalties.
This is, is anybody from the bank here? Seeing no one, this is a public hearing, anyone probably wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we're close to public hearing. Councilwoman?
Again, Devin, knowing that this was going to be foreclosed upon and everything, did they have enough notification before you did the renovation to do it themselves? Or did they leave us hanging?
Abatement was complete September 13th of last year of 2010. And as far as we show, the property has not, they're still showing it is- It's showing that at that time, when the abatement was done, the property was still in the former owner's name. It had not, as far as title shows, in the Recorder's Office, it had not changed names yet, so I really don't know at what point the bank took possession of the property. A lot of times, we're, we're constrained by when the clerk or the Recorder's Office actually records a document and when it posts. A lot of times, these banks will be foreclosed, and they sit on these properties for six, eight, sometimes a year before they actually transfer into their name.
Well, we can only go on the information that you have-
Correct.
-which is that it was not in the bank's possession at the time.
But the one thing I do know is since the bank has taken possession, I show nothing here that the bank has made any attempt to contact us or have a representative here for this meeting today.
And you've contacted him how many times?
The last letter that went out was a notice of public hearing went to the bank.
How about any notices previous to that? March, May 25th, 26th of 2010. I'm going to do the same with this one, and that will be, I'll make the motion, that's okay. These are hard to be able to ascertain, and I'm only trying to be careful on these because of the situation it puts our neighborhoods in if the banks don't do their due diligence. So I will move for the $2,953.20 to cover the money spent by the city with an additional
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Item 54 is also a public hearing and possible action to consider a report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 704 Easy Street in the amount of $2,573, and assess a maximum of $55,550 in daily civil penalties. Property owners are Romero, Ornilius, and Maria De Lautis. This is also in Ward 1. Mr. Smith, please. And I declare the public hearing open.
Yes, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background and the condition of the property was a public hazard and attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired Weaver Construction to secure all structures, remove all trash and debris, and remove all high weeds and grass. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow.com is $71,500. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses to include a $780 invoice for Weaver Construction, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $2,573, and consider assessing a maximum of $55,550 in daily civil penalties.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Seeing no one, we're close to public hearing. Councilwoman?
And this still is in the, is the property of the people, not the bank?
That is correct.
And the house is worth how much?
That's an estimated appraised value of the property.
I move that we recover the amount of $2,573 that was the cost of fixing the property, and that we have a $1,000 daily civil penalty charge.
You've read the motion, any questions? Hearing none, cast your vote, please.
And Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
If I might, we did visit these properties myself and one of my staff. Of course, it was after you had done the abatement. I want to tell you that looked really good.
Thank you.
Your people did a really good job. We looked in the backyard to make sure the pools were, you know, safely locked and everything, and so your people should be complimented, or whoever did the work for you.
Thank you.
Cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries. Item 55 is a public hearing and possible action to consider report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 7600 Seagull Avenue in the amount of $3,857.50, and assess a maximum of $41,050 in daily civil penalties. Property owners Bernard L. Miles and Diane H. Scott Miles. This is in Ward 2, Councilman Wolfson's Ward. Devin, please.
Good, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background and the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired American Demolition to remove all trash and debris, and remove all high weeds and grass from all areas and apply an herbicide, secure all windows, doors, and openings, and board the patio slider door, and remove all non-permitted sheds. To date, there have been seven inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow.com is $176,000. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses to include a $1,290 invoice for American demolition, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $3,857.50, and consider assessing a maximum of $41,050 in daily civil penalties.
Are there any questions, Mr. Smith? Hearing none, this is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we're close to public hearing. Councilman Wolfson, please.
Yes, thanks, Mayor Protem. Devin, a few questions. I'm working off your backup here, and I'm working off the face page of your backup.
Okay.
And it says that this case was generated on April 26th, 2010. Does that mean that we got a citizen complaint about that date?
Yes.
So probably a neighbor called up and said, "Oh, my gosh, City of Las Vegas, do something about this property in my neighborhood, because it looks terrible."
Correct.
Or words to that effect.
Correct.
You put in motion a process to try and notify the owner, got no response. The abatement was completed on September 3rd of 2010. So about four months between the time that the neighbor called up complaining and the time that the property was cleaned up, correct?
Correct.
And I don't know if we showed the pictures of the pre-abatement, but this was, it's a corner house in a nice neighborhood, and this is after they cleaned it up, that picture, I believe. Maybe it's before. Well, this is certainly before.
Yeah.
And these folks just let this house go to heck, both the front yard and the backyard. And so, it was abated, in other words, cleaned up September 3rd, and here we are, middle of April. And I, I know you have good news for us, because you told me upstairs, and we're going to share that in just a second. But that's part of the problem, is it took us four months to clean up the property, and then it's taking us another eight months to come in and assess penalties, reimburse the contractor who needs to be reimbursed, and then potentially assess penalties. Your backup says the current owner has owned this property since September of 1989. So that's 22 years that somebody owned this house, whether they lived in it or not, who knows, but they bear the responsibility. Now, it's a foreclosure, so a bank owns this property now, right?
Correct. It's quality loan service.
And have you been in contact with that bank at all?
We have notified that bank as of July 6th of 2010, and then they got the letter of public hearing.
Okay, so in July, you notified them that the City of Las Vegas has realized that there's a property that they own that's a nuisance, and we'd like you to do something about it, and the bank ignored us, right? Okay. It's a public hearing, Mayor Protem?
Yes, this is a public hearing, anyone in the public wish to speak on this item? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you very much. Councilman Wolfson, Wolfson?
We need, we do need your name, though.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Councilman Wolfson, this property did not just arrive in that condition on that April. It would, from the looks of that thing, it would probably have been sitting there probably five months before the people even called. So I mean, this goes way back, and it's a problem we're having in all of these, on all of these.
I agree with you, Todd, it just didn't happen in one day.
Deborah Anthony, I just wanted to say, I just, I just wanted to say, we're going way back in time, on time where we were having problems, and we're having problems now. I'm on disability, and they're cutting back on everything, and, 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 and inspecting, when we go through the budget crisis like this, it affects people that are disabled and elderly.
We appreciate that, thank you very much.
Okay, that's about all.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Anyone else wish to speak? We're close to public hearing. Thanks, Councilman.
Okay, my motion, would you please tell us the good news you have for us, Devin, first, with your permission, Mayor Protem?
You may. After the last council meeting, you brought this to the attention, that you would like to see something done. I have been working with my director, Mr. Knight, and we, I have a proposal that I have sent him for review, to get us caught up, and then to be able to have these cases from the time that we would actually open a case, at best case, would be here 90 days, from the time we would open the case till you guys would, the council would actually-
You've got a plan-
We have a plan.
-that is sitting on Chris Knight's desk, who is your supervisor, and I know he's out ill or something, that will allow, from the date we get the citizen complaint, to go out, inspect the property, give the proper legal notices, do whatever we have to do under the law, and then if we don't get any answer from the property owner, to clean up the property, and then bring it to the council within about 90 days. Is that what you said?
Yes, that would be a property that we have no response for-
Sure.
-any type of conversation with the bank. Because if we get a conversation from a bank that they say that they're going to go out and clean it, we're going to, of course, afford them the opportunity to go do so. So, but if we have no conversation, if we go out, we post the property, we have no notification from the owner or a bank back, we would go immediately to abatement, and we should be able to have those before you within 90 days.
Great job.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to Chris Knight signing off on that proposal and bringing it before the council. Okay, in this case, because of the circumstances, my motion is to award the $3,870.50 to cover the costs, and I'm going to assess in my motion the maximum $41,050, and that's because this property owner totally ignored us.
Any questions on the motion? Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Wolfson, on your request. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody, your staff's work.
Item number 56 is a public hearing and possible action to consider a report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of dangerous building, demolition located at 1662 G Street in the amount of $14,625.25, and assess a maximum of $145,550 in daily civil penalties. Property owner, William Prentice, this is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's Ward. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Smith?
Good, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. The purpose and background and the condition of the property was a public hazard and a attractive nuisance. The Department of Building and Safety declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Building and Safety hired Weaver Construction to demolish the structures in compliance with Clark County Health Regulations. And remove all trash, debris, and vegetation, and all trash, debris, and vegetation. To date, there have been 18 inspections conducted at this location. The estimated value of the property based on Zillow.com is $62,500. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses to include a $9,525 invoice for Weaver Construction, and a $600 invoice for Camair for asbestos survey, in addition to other fees assessed for a total of $14,625.75, and consider assessing a maximum of $145,550 in daily civil penalties.
That house looked like my house up in Panaca. This is a public hearing. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Before this was demolished, was it open, or was there any way that the asbestos could be scattered throughout the neighborhood in the condition it was before it was torn down?
We don't believe so, but that's why we have a company like Camair, who's a licensed company, to go in, they do an assessment on the building, if there is any asbestos, they would have removed it, and then we do the demolition after the asbestos is safely removed.
If, my position is this, if there's a danger there with asbestos blowing around, I think that we should get the maximum amount of the penalties. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak under citizen participation? We'll close that portion. Councilman Barlow, please.
Yes.
Welcome.
Devin, thank you for your work. I have a question for you. According to Zillow.com, and I know that that's, it doesn't override an appraisal, so what is your recommendation, being that the daily civil penalties are in upwards of $150,000, and the property is only worth 60?
Typically, when we, when we do, even if you would assess the total amount on this case of the $145,000, if somebody came in and they attempted to negotiate it down, typically, we get 10% of that. So you could just assess 10% of that, and it really wouldn't be negotiable, or you could do 10% of that, and then at some time, they came back and asked for a waiver, they could come before the council and ask for that to be reduced even further. It's completely up to the council's discretion.
Okay, great, thank you so very much. So with that being said, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for the assessed value of the fees as stated.
Any question on the motion? Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 57 is a public hearing and possible action to consider and request a waiver for a waiver and/or reduction of fees and/or civil penalties for the property located at 1005 North 21st Street in the amount of, amount up to $29,554.60. Property owner is Household Finance Realty Corp., Nevada. This is in Ward 3. Mr. Smith, please.
Good, Mayor Protem, Devin Smith, Neighborhood Response Manager. Today's hearing is a request from Edgar C. Smith, Esquire, attorney representing owner, to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees imposed on the parcel at the City Council meeting on November 17th, 2010. The case was generated on February 16th, 2010. There was one abatement conducted at this property, May 20th, 2010. The lien was recorded at the Clark County Recorder's Office on November 30th, 2010. Building and Safety received a request of waiver and/or reduction of civil penalty application dated February 10th, 2010, from Edgar C. Smith, attorney representing the owner, requesting the civil penalties be waived. We have been in contact with the representative, and they have agreed to pay the $5,004.60 was the hard cost that was incurred by the city, in addition to the 10% of the total assessed amount. So the 10% would be $2,455 for a total of $7,459.60 owed to the city.
Any questions? Public hearing? Close to public hearing. I would make a motion to follow staff's recommendation. Turn it up. Never mind. I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation, and would you like to be heard, sir?
Briefly, Your Honor, thank you. Edgar Smith, on behalf of Household, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Our application was actually presented in February of 2011, after my client acquired this property at a foreclosure sale on December 9th, 2010. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd still move to follow staff's recommendation, and are there any questions of that motion? Hearing none, cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries, and we would like to welcome Councilman Ross and the mayor back, please. And Mayor, we had, we've already pulled item number 43. Oh, did we post that? Did we post it?
Yes, it's on.
Motion carries, yes. They're still standing there, so I'm just concerned. We did pull item number 43 for a new vote. You abstained earlier on a vote from this, so we, you voted on this item in the afternoon, or the item afterwards, so we need to just have you abstain on this item also, so-
Very good, with the record, Devin.
I'm just going to call item R17, 2011, forward, and for clarification, please.
Just taking the motion.
This is, yeah, I'm here on that.
Right.
Beagetti?
Yes.
You abstained on the item when you voted in the afternoon, or the next item, so you need to abstain on this item.
Yes, I'm going to abstain on item number 43 on the same basis that I did this morning regarding Mr. Beagetti's property being situated next to property owned by my son, Ross.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions on the motion? Let's cast your vote, please.
Let me get it up there. (pause)
Let's cast your vote, please. Cast your votes. Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you.
Your Honor, we're on, uh, item number, uh.
58.
58, and we, item 62 was withheld.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. Item 58 and 59. 58 is VAR 40375. Request for variance to allow eight parking spaces where 48 are required. Number 59 is VAR 40543. Request for variance to allow a zero-foot front, a side yard setback where 10 feet is required. Uh, item number 60 is SDR 40374. Request for site development plan review to convert an existing warehouse into a 45,398-square-foot wholesale showroom facility, with a waiver to allow no perimeter landscape buffer where eight feet is required. The applicant owner is Gaetano Di Guino. The project is located on 1.03 acres at 2,700 and 2,770 Highland Drive. The planning commission has no recommendation, and staff recommends denial of all items. These items are in Ward 1, and they're public hearings, which I now declare open. Is the applicant present? If you please identify yourself for the record, and we'd be happy to hear from you, sir.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Arun Fadness. I'm the project manager for the client. Uh, my address is 2522 Chambers Road, Tustin, California. Unfortunately, the owner of the property is, uh, sick, and he couldn't attend a meeting, so I apologize on his behalf. Uh, this project was presented to the planning commission, and, uh, I wanted to give you a brief understanding of the client, uh, that we are talking about. So, if I can take one minute and talk about Mr. Gaetano.
Certainly.
If I may.
You, you certainly may.
Mr. Gaetano is a, um, is a wine importer. Uh, he is the biggest importer of Italian wines in the United States. He has already a warehouse in, um, Las, Las Vegas. His corporate office is in Duarte. He has, uh, another warehouse and facility in Mexico, another facility in, and, uh, Rome, Italy. So, it, he's in Italy. He has about 50 or 60 wines in his name, that he imports and distributes all over the country, and to other outside the country. So, he's a very, um, established businessman. He has been in Las Vegas, so he's local, and, um, uh, I want to show you some of the product that he has. If I can put it on the screen here.
Oh, here.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So, these are some of his wines that he, uh, has. All these have his name on it.
And, uh, um, there are many, many wines, and as I told you, there are like 50 or 60 wines that he markets to, uh, and they are from mid-range to very high quality, depending on the customers. So, this is just, uh, uh, just, just to give you a brief introduction of the client. Now, going to the project, we did present this project to the planning commission. Uh, since then, we have modified the plan to, um, reduce, to take out all the loading docks on the west side of the project. So, the... We had shown loading docks here, facing this way, and loading docks over there. The idea was to have receiving there, and deliveries out of the warehouse this way. But there is a access easement, and the adjacent, uh, adjacent property owner, uh, did make that a point, and it's a recorded easement, so we honored that request, and we took out the loading docks on this, on the west side. So, that's one modification that was made. The other modification that we did is, at the roof level, where we have the, uh, wine testing area. The wine testing is for the distributor invites people that are, uh, not retailers. No, they are not allowed to sell the wine by retail. They only can sell to wholesalers. By Nevada law, he cannot have a retail license to sell, or have a bar, or anything. That is not allowed in your state, and that cannot be allowed, even if he applies for it. So, this is a wholesale operation only, so he invites few guests, and they will be testing new wines that are being brought in. So, on the roof plan, before, we had the entire roof for the wine tasting parties, but now, we have reduced it to only 4,000 square feet, instead of the entire roof area for the wine testing. So, we reduced the parking demand from 48 to 22. So, now, the parking variance is, uh, down from 48 required, eight provided, to 22 required, eight provided. With that, having said that, that party area, we can always park the cars, uh, by valet parking within our property. These people are, uh, they can park all over here, because these parties will be in the evening, and there's no loading going on, so we can park our cars by valet parking here. There's plenty of room for 22 cars by stacking them as a valet parking. So, uh, we will not be parking outside the property. So, my request is to allow that variance if, uh, if the council would, uh, accept the, the recommendation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to the gentleman? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 249 North 19th Street. How many people would be working in this establishment? Do they?
Are you able to, uh, respond to that?
Yeah, a maximum three people.
Okay, so there's plenty of parking.
Currently, in the warehouse, there is, there is one employee, uh, in Las Vegas Warehouse, and one helper.
Yeah. My name is Deborah Anthony. Um, I was, I was wondering, uh, how this business gets started, and, um, and, 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 um, and keep on going on with the business like that?
Well, he started as a, um, a busboy carting wines in a wine store, about 50 years ago. His story is given in his, uh, book. If you like, I can send you a copy. Today, he became by hard work, a, an owner, and now, he imports, uh, wines and serves the community. So, he has come up from the, from the bottom up.
I appreciate a copy. Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay. You, make sure you send her the book.
I will.
Okay, because she's an avid reader.
I need her address. I will send her a book.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be heard?
I've given that book before.
Do you want a book, too?
No, I brought a copy to the council.
No, no, I was thinking to this gentleman.
James Turner, 310 Radwick Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm representing the NYPD Corp., which is the adjacent property owner to this petitioner. We're the people that he said that he worked with in changing his west-side parking, which is now satisfactory to us on all of that, on his loading bay, but we would still recommend, or, excuse me, request that you adhere to staff recommendations for minimum parking, because a lack of parking in this causes a problem to the other adjacent property owners.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody else like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing, then. Counselor Wibbittarcani, what's your pleasure?
My pleasure is to turn this over to Mr. Flag, um, who will, uh, as we go through each one of these, Mayor.
Okay.
That's all right.
Sure.
Oh, wait, wait. He had a question.
If you don't mind, Mayor, um.
No, of course.
Courtswoman, Mayor.
Certainly.
I do have a question for the gentleman.
Yes.
Uh, you had mentioned the wine tasting.
Yes.
This is something that you all have done at your other facilities?
He has that at the corporate office in Duarte, yes.
Okay. And what type of turnout do you have at your wine tasting?
Oh, there, they have like 20, 25 people at the most. It's a smaller place, and they are, they're, they're street.
The place in California is smaller than this place here?
No, this, this place is bigger than his Duarte warehouse. It's a very small warehouse in Duarte.
So, this will be your largest warehouse?
Uh, right now, he has one. He has planned another one, or will, that will be the, that will be comparable.
But as of right now, this is the largest?
Uh, right now, this will become the larger of the two.
Okay, and so, the code is asking for 48 parking spaces, and you're now requesting?
No, it's now 22. We have revised the plans.
So, we've.
Code requirements are now 22 only.
Oh, so the code is requesting 22 now?
22, yes. And, uh, planning has the plan.
Okay.
And I will submit this for record today.
Okay.
So, the variance is from 22 to 8, not 48 to 8.
So, from 20 to 8?
Yes.
Okay, so, back to my original question. So, if you're, if you-
And we'll park those cars in the valet park, in the back area. Extra 14 cars that you need. Eight parking spaces we have already.
The eight parking spaces are up front?
Yes. And it's area in the back to park 14 cars, when we have a party.
14 cars?
Yes. Temporarily.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Flag?
Well, just before we get into that, I, I just wanted to say, we've been working some time and making changes that would meet with the neighboring businesses' needs, and also with, uh, Di Guino, Mr. Di Guino's needs. And, um, so we have had some changes made. I wanted to take them separately, because if you go to the first one, number 58, and we're asking to allow eight parking spaces where 48 were required, that was at the time before we made changes. Now, it's eight parking spaces where 22 are required, but you have an additional 14 in back, which I believe Mr. Di Guino, or, it showed us, you know, where parking could occur, and with, with Mr. Flag has said could occur, which met, would meet the full requirement then. I'm saying this, and can you say it in the terms of planning?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. Um, as you've already indicated, the applicant has since submitted revised plans to us, which we received last Thursday, which reduces the parking need for the property, as the applicant has stated, to 22 parking spaces. And so, the variance that they would be seeking today is for an additional 14 parking spaces. Um, staff is of the opinion, based on the dimensions of the site and the current layout, that has been proposed, that the applicant could provide an additional 14 spaces on the site, without having to modify either the existing buildings, or the proposed addition to the east side of the building. Uh, and so, it might be, if it's council's pleasure, to deny the variance, that what the applicant could do is submit a revised parking plan showing all of the 22 parking spaces on the site.
And you remember when we met in my office, that, uh, Mr. Guan-
Gaetano.
Di Guano, uh, showed on the little plan where the additional parking could come, and you yourself are saying that when you have these wine tastings, you would have an additional 14. So, basically, it appears that you don't need to have a variance, because you can get, uh, the full amount of parking spaces you need there.
Yeah, I think what, what you're saying is the 14 cars that we, you need, uh, if they are not striped there, those extra cars can be parked there by valet parking in the back area, within our property.
Yes.
But if you want them striped, we can provide the striping, if that's.
Well, I, I think if you provide the striping, then we have the right number, and you do not need to have a, a variance. So, really, and that's what you say, right, Mr. Flag?
I, I, I was, may, may I offer an alternative?
Certainly. An alternative?
Uh-huh.
Oh, what are you suggesting?
Yeah, I will suggest an alternative. Is this a good place? You can see?
We can see.
Can you see it?
Yes.
Okay. I have shown 10 cars here, on the west side, in the front. So, we'll have 18 cars instead of 22, and I've shown about striping area to the, to the south of it, because as the delivery trucks, this is our only loading dock, which is existing. Truck will have to come in, nose down, and back up. So, I need some room here to, for the truck to turn around. So, if we got allowed 18 cars, will that be acceptable with four car as a variance? So, we will provide 18 instead of 22. If I, in the back, we need those four loading docks, because if I add parking in the back, I lose a loading dock. We already lost loading docks in the front.
But, you know, uh, your loading dock is only used when you're loading, and you said that wouldn't be very often, and there's the smaller, uh, trucks that would be coming, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's what I understood. And, and, uh, so that would, you'd only be needing those parking when you have your tasting, which is at night, when you wouldn't be bringing in additional trucks for the loading dock, I would assume. Now, I'm going with you, because this got a little complicated on us a bit. But why, uh, why would you only, why would you not go for 22 if you have room for 22?
I want to make sure they have room, you know, to maneuver in the here. Or I could maybe add four in the back here, and still have the loading. We could provide 22 cars. Let's just say we'll provide 22 cars.
Yeah.
And leave it.
Okay. Then, uh, how should we word this, so that, uh, I don't want to vote a no on this, but I don't want to take it the way it is, so it would be accepting it if they do?
Actually, the proper action to, if.
We're going to go on the proper action here.
Yeah, we could do 22 cars and.
If the applicant is going to provide the 22 spaces on-site, then the proper action would be to deny the variance, item number 58. And then, on item number 60, what we would do is add a condition that would state something to the effect that parking spaces shall be provided on-site, in accordance with code requirements. A revised site plan shall be submitted to the Department of Planning for review and approval prior to the submitting, uh, submittal of a building permit.
Okay.
So, we would do that as an added condition on item number 60.
Okay, that would be it. And that, we would, we would then, uh, vote no on 58, because you don't need it.
Okay.
And, uh, then would go to the others, and would put a condition on 60 that would allow you to take your plan for the additional parking spaces, and go through planning on that. And that wouldn't delay you then, right?
It would not delay the applicant, no.
Okay. So, then I move, I just wanted you to understand why we're doing it this way.
Okay.
Uh, I move denial on number 58, because, uh, the applicant has enough room to put the needed number of parking spaces.
Okay.
And when he does, they will be striped.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Okay. Item 59, Counselor Wibbitt?
And I would, uh, what we've discussed, my understanding, move for approval on item number 59.
All right, that's the motion.
Did you have any comment from the neighboring, but, uh, the way the situation is, and really, what he's going to do to the building is make it look nicer.
Much nicer than what it is?
Uh, we were in favor of what he wanted to do with the building. Uh, but if he modifies his plan to park over here, he may not have trucks coming in at night, but his adjacent owner does, and that's what this property was reserved for, was accessed.
Is that, is that the property that has the condition on it?
This is the property that has the condition on it, correct.
Mm-hmm.
And, if you look at, uh, this drawing here, this would be the property line of what we're referring to, and this is the loading bay of this warehouse. So, if he were to move his permanent parking over here, while it's being parked on, he would be blocking access to the other, the other property. And that was the whole condition of the reason that deed restriction was placed.
Yeah, it's a deed restriction on there. How does that fit in? I thought we had worked that out.
Yes, we had worked out some tentative language that would be added to item number 60, and the language that we had looked at would be to amend condition number nine, um, with an additional sentence that would say, "The applicant shall ensure that the mapping action does not override or abrogate any previously enacted deed restriction currently recorded on or associated with the lots, and any new map shall clearly denote the area in reference to the deed restriction." Current language of the deed restriction is as such. It says, "In regards to parcel number," and then gives the historic parcel number, "it is stipulated that it must remain as a parking lot for common area tenants exclusive of the building." And so, that is the deed restriction that would carry through to the new map.
So, you're not proposing a building there, just parking stalls.
No. I believe that, um, Mr. Flag has it worked out.
Yes.
Uh, I believe that, as we are putting all this together, it just happens the way the order is, it's a little confusing, but that they will have the consideration of the deed restriction in there, and I will move to approve, we are on number 60, right?
Correct.
Number, we did vote on 59 yet?
59.
Oh, well, then, that has nothing, 59, uh, I would have moved to approve as was, as is.
All right.
With all conditions.
Let's vote, please.
Excuse me, if I may clarify. Item number 59 is not amended. It is item 60 that is proposed to be amended.
Oh, okay.
Item 59 with the recommendation of staff.
Okay, so no amendment on 59. It'll be all on 60.
All right, so the motion is to approve 59?
Yes.
All right, please vote on that. Motion carries, and now 60.
And then I would move to approve, uh, 60 with all conditions, and as amended.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
Is that correct now?
That is correct. There would be an amendment to condition number nine relative to the mapping issue, and then an added condition relative to providing the adequate number of parking spaces, as I previously read.
So, representing the applicant, you understand what this is, and you agree?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, just, representing the other neighborhood businesses, you understand and you agree?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted that on the record. And then I move accordingly.
All right, please, uh, vote, and then post. Motion carries, good luck, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And thank you all for working together so that we could work this out because it was because of the deed restriction and all of that, it got a little complicated at times. But thank you.
All right, item sixty-one is SDR three-seven-three-six-three. Site development plan review, it's gonna be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Lead Foundation Trust. Counsel review of request for major amendment to an approved site development plan review to allow zero-foot landscape buffers and no planning materials along the north and east perimeters where three and four feet were previously approved respectfully, respectively, on two-point-eight-one acres of thirty-nine-oh-one West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward one. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor and council members, uh, my name is Barry Becker. Uh, my address is fifty South Jones, Suite one hundred, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here on behalf of the Lead Foundation.
All right, thank you. Um, would you like to make any kind of presentation or just answer questions?
Well, we've kind of worked on this, uh, for almost a year now. And, um, uh, this involves, and I'm not sure exactly what the motion is, you know, it involves us dedication, dedicating a, um, a bus turnout and, uh, and then our landscape plan being approved. And, uh, a condition added to that motion that, um, we, we lose three parking spaces by granting this bus turnout that will have a permanent variance or ability to have three less parking spaces if we do something that, um, uh, requires more parking. Currently, we're overparked, and it's not a problem. But at some point in time, this property would be redeveloped.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions to Mr. Becker? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilwoman?
This is another one that we worked on for a long time. You're right, Barry. And, um, uh, I, I'm glad you mentioned the fact that the Lead Foundation is letting the land that they own be used for a bus turnout, which is very important at this corner because you cannot see unless you're the first car on the right side to turn right there, and then there's a bus stop right there, and you can back into it. We've had several accidents. Uh, and graciously, they've, uh, allowed us to have that land. And in exchange for that land, we're helping them with the problem they have as far as landscaping. They have no outside faucets of water to take care of landscaping. And, um, uh, to put one in right now, there would cost a lot of money. And we're allowing them to use some of our decorating, uh, landscaping that we have down Charleston median. So it'll pick up the same type of art-type of desert situation. And then we are contributing that, the city is, in exchange for the land for the bus turnout. And did you wanna say, I say it the way I talk to people, and then we'll have you say it so we make sure we're correct.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you, if I might. We would propose an added condition to this item. The added condition, uh, would be as follows. Dedicate appropriate right-of-way in accordance with standard drawing number two-thirty-four-point-one for a bus turnout on Valley View Boulevard adjacent to the site within thirty days of approval of this action by City Council. Contingent upon dedication of this right-of-way, the city acknowledges that three existing parking spaces eliminated through this dedication will be credited to the site for the purposes of required parking counts for any remodeling, alteration, or expansion on the site. For any use that requires an increase in the number of required parking spaces, only the increased number of parking spaces shall be required.
Is that your understanding, Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So that seems to take care of the problem. We thank, uh, the Lead Foundation and, uh, the lady with whom you work very much for her generosity in that. And, um, we will be working, we already know what we need to do as far as the plants are concerned. My understanding is that the palm trees stay, and that's, that's the responsibility of, um, your group, and that, um, you'll keep them weeded and all that. Okay? All right, so I move then to approve with, uh, would you call that a condition? An added condition? So approve with all conditions plus the added condition. I move for approval.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To Mayor, I, I want to say that I, I'm sorry that it takes me so much time in going through these, but in my ward, we found many things that just the wording of something wasn't exact enough or, you know, in fact, some things disappeared even in time over what happened. So I just want to make very sure.
You have no, no need to apologize, you're doing your job just right. Um, item sixty-three, ROC four-one-one-six-one, review of condition, a public hearing. The applicant owner is Wei Chun Jin. A request for a review of condition of a previously approved special use permit to amend condition number six to state that all beer and wine coolers shall remain in their original manufacturer's configuration at fourteen-fifty-one West Owens Avenue in Ward five. The staff recommends denial, this is a public hearing, which is now open.
My name is Wei Chun Jin, twenty-one-ninety-nine Natalie Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. And, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Uh, my name's Pat Jin. I live in twenty-one-ninety-nine Natalie, Las Vegas, Nevada. Uh, the reason I come up today because my son have represent a client in court, so I have to speak for ourselves now. Anyway, I want to thank you all to give us a second chance to have a beer and wine license to serve our store. That's a way to make a little, little, little bit of living. And, uh, I want, I really appreciate it, but yet we just want to serve better for the community in the immediate area. That's why we like to, uh, whatever you decided, we would go buy, but yet at the same time, the family is strongly against selling any single beer. That's all the business, that's all the question. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jin.
And on that, um, condition number six, we were just requesting to remove the four and six packs. And I did ask, would you just put the condition as no singles? Because we, there are three packs out there that we could sell, and they're in much bigger cans, and they're in bigger, you know, much bigger volumes. But once we are tied down to four to six packs, then the three-packs customer cannot come and use it.
I, I didn't even realize there were three packs, to be honest with you.
No, neither did I, Mayor. And, um, when they came before, six months, roughly six months or so ago, um, the community, as well as I specifically, and you all agreed as well, as it relates to singles, there, there'll be absolutely no singles, and you all agreed to that. Um, but Mayor and Council, I was also not under the, um, um, understanding as to the three packs. So that is a part of the, the sales, and I told them that I was okay with that, being that, um, I have allowed it, um, at the other stores. Um, but that was just an oversight, in my opinion, on our part because we didn't know that. So, um, I asked them if they would come back and, and we'll make the appropriate adjustment with planning, which we've done. And so this is actually a cleanup item, if you will, from six months ago. So, um, I've explained that to the community, uh, some folks in the community, as well as to the Jins, and they have agreed to that. So my motion at this time would be to, uh, for the city to clean up our language, uh, which I believe is already on the record. But, uh, Flynn, if you will, just go ahead and restate it, and then I'll move forward with my motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. The language of condition six would be amended to read as follows. "All beer and wine coolers shall remain in their original manufacturer's configuration intended for resale."
Okay.
Okay, very good. Um, this is a public hearing, if anyone wants to be heard on this.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bill Hi. I live at nineteen-forty Mill Circle, which is inside Bonanza Village. I believe the mayor's from Bonanza Village. Uh, we came down here six months ago, and we were, uh, in compliance with the city planning recommendation for denial. And all of the reasons which we presented at that time are still in effect, were still the reasons why we are still in denial for them to have a beer and wine, uh, cooler license. We definitely, definitely oppose any amendment that will make an adjustment to that where they will now go from what we compromised on six packs down to three packs. And the reason being is that we believe that when you get three packs, and, and because that location is very transit, and with the upgrading of, of Montlough King Boulevard and all the traffic coming in from Aliantic into the downtown area, it makes it very convenient for anyone, transit people, to stop there and pick up six packs. We are also aware that we have a litter problem, problem in the area, and we're working very hard inside Bonanza Village to upgrade the properties in there. We're working with Metro now. Uh, Captain Burns has been into the community several times. We have several foreclosed properties in there, which we're trying to make sure that they're not vandalized. And we believe that transit people passing through that area will stop and pick up these smaller packages, and, and rather take them to their location will have the access to, you know, further, uh, cause some littering in the community. Uh, the, uh, the residents which I represent oppose to any amendment that will adjust from what we compromised six months ago. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else like to be heard?
Hello, I'm Rasan Joshua Collins, a minister in the area. I just agree, uh, it's just easier for more people to get drunk. We have enough drunkards in the community, and, you know, uh, drunkenness leads to hell, according to the Bible, too. And just encourage people to stay sober and, and work toward a sober community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, Councilman?
Yes, Mayor, thank you so very much. And I can appreciate Mr. Hi's comments as well in his, in the condition of, um, in the position of the residents of Bonanza Village as well. Uh, but also, I'm under the impression that, um, when they came before six months ago, um, I don't know how, uh, I know we only spoke specifically about the singles, and, and all containers were to remain in the original package. So when this, um, wording was placed, um, I, that's neither here nor there. I don't know how or why, but, um, specifically, we stated no singles and, and all packaging should remain in, in the original manufacturer's pack, packaging. And, um, and so I'm going to, um, move for approval of this item for the condition to be removed as far as the four to six and to, uh, remain with the no single cells, which I believe was in condition number seven. So I'll have that, um, that'll be my motion at this time.
All right, did you want to be heard additionally?
Yes, uh, just one comment regarding, uh, Councilman Ballows. Uh, like you, Councilman Ballow, like the board, we were not aware that there was a three-pack, uh, uh, sales package available. Had we been aware that at that time, we would have, uh, made reference to denial of the, of the three-pack? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, there's a motion. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Mr. Jin?
Thank you.
Mr. Jin. Pat?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what's your specialty over there?
She can tell you.
What's a specialty?
I do wear my hair today.
Watch TV?
The specialty is to watch TV, that's it? Don't you have the great Chinese food that you used to have?
Uh, incidentally, uh, my oldest son coming out of town next week.
I'm sorry.
He's the one you met, he met airport, what, about twenty years ago?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
When you start medical school.
I haven't used this in twelve years, Pat. Next time you come here, wear your hearing aid. I'm trying to help you with your business, you can't even-
Thank you, sir.
You, uh, go away. Go away. Go away, out of here.
We give you the, the hair day to work very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Would you please take Mr. Jin and get him out of here, please?
Thank you.
That's the problem with the store. Councilman? That's the problem with his, with his store. People come in and they ask for a six-pack, and he gives them, uh, chow mein. Item sixty-four, DIR four-one-two-seven-oh, Director's Business, non-public hearing. The applicant owner is Oasis Las Vegas LLC. Appeal of a denial of a building permit by the Director of the Planning Department of an off-premise sign at one-ten North Jones Boulevard. This is in Ward one. The staff recommends denial. And that's it. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Um, Mayor and Perry from the law firm Ballard Spar at one-hundred City Parkway, Suite seventeen-fifty, representing the owner of the property, Oasis Las Vegas LLC, and the party that was denied the building permit. Um, the planning department has indicated that the denial of the building permit is based on the property's lack of a valid special use permit and that the property does not have a valid special use permit because the off-premise sign that had been there for thirty, or since, let's say, since the eighties, um, had been voluntarily demolished. Um, as the property owner who had the sign and, uh, who bought the property because the billboard was there, we would just like to submit that we did not voluntarily demolish the sign, that, that upon finding out that our tenant had taken action to demolish the sign and to make efforts to put up a sign elsewhere that would preclude us from keeping the sign there. My clients hired people to draw up plans to try to get their own permit. They hired consultants, lawyers, people who could be here to help demonstrate that they did not voluntarily want the sign to be gone. And, um, we would just like to submit for the record our objections, which were submitted at the City Council meeting on March sixteenth, twenty-eleven, on applications SUP three-nine-four-three-two and VAR three-nine-four-three-three. And I would submit that these objections, as well as the other things that I have just mentioned, demonstrate that we didn't voluntarily take down the sign and, uh, request that the building permit be approved.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protam?
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, ma'am, with all due respect, uh, I believe that, uh, previous sign owners tried to work with, uh, your, uh, person that you're alluding to today, and he refused to help them. Uh, he knew at the time that they was gonna move, uh, buy other property and build the sign. And so we've been through this many, many times. And I'm gonna follow staff's recommendation. I don't know what, uh, uh, Councilwoman's gonna do, but I'm gonna follow staff's recommendation for denial of this item, so. I, I feel like there's been plenty of time to get this all worked out. They didn't take their time. And now we have another sign there, so they're not compli, in compliance anymore. And that's the reason why I think staff denied it, and I'm, I'm just tired of it.
Okay.
Okay, well, basically, as I understand it, you're really asking to supplement the record. I mean, that's why you're here today.
Um, you know, I received a, a request to attend and to, to just put into the, into the record our objections that were there.
What is she supplementing?
I'm not, I'm not submitting.
She has some documents that she's moving to-
Um, you know, I, actually, all I brought was, this was what we tried to submit. I don't even need to hand them to the clerk, I'm just letting you know that-
Some of those documents they submitted last time, we deemed to be irrelevant based upon the fact that they were trying to introduce things that they hadn't introduced into their original presentation. I don't believe that'd be appropriate at this time to accept those, uh, those documents.
That's fine.
All right, and that's your advice?
It's on the schedule, and we're here to tell you we still-
Okay, fair enough. The, the, as long as, uh-
Still are failing.
There's no problem. Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing with regard to supplementing the record.
There's no reason to, she, she's withdrawing it.
Well, what's really important to say, though, is that there, her, her oral statements are different than statements made at the last hearing. And I would hate for that argument to be used if we were in fact sued on that application. They can't also bootstrap these arguments into the last, the last hearing. So I'd just like to put that on the record as well.
Okay, well, everybody's putting things on the record, and the record will speak for itself at some inappropriate time. All right, thank you very much. All right, may I have a motion, please? This is, uh, Councilwoman Tarkadina?
Um, the last time we met on this, uh, and, and I would, um, uh, say to my colleague, Mr. Reese, I do not believe that the owner of the property knew that they were going to take the sign down. I think they would have been much more upset earlier if they had. But this is a situation as I see it. There was a sign there. It was taken down by the people who put the sign there. They moved it to an adjacent location. They had the right to do that, according to what we've gone through already, uh, and, uh, the vote that was taken. Now we have, uh, your client coming, uh, to put another sign up. But my understanding is, that's not allowable e, even there because it's too close to the sign we're talking about originally.
Mr. Mayor, through you.
Mr. Mayor, through you, um, it is true that the applicant has submitted a special use permit. Uh, staff is in the process of reviewing it. Um, we have not come with a recommendation yet, so I think it'd be inappropriate for us to discuss an application that we haven't fully reviewed.
But if, Mr. Mayor, I think I can clarify for the councilwoman? Or no?
Go ahead. Uh, I, I don't know why we're doing this, to be quite honest with you, but go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
No, the, the issue here is, uh, we've got, we had a request for a building permit to reinstall the sign that was removed, and based upon conditions of approval on that sign previously, uh, you can't reinstall the sign without a new special use permit. There was no spec, new special use permit, therefore, staff rejected the building permit, and that's why it's here before you. Uh, just don't want things to be misinterpreted, misconstrued later on. That's the reason why, uh, staff is recommending denial and affirmance of the appeal. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman?
Well, I move to uphold the denial, and I also would like to say they certainly have a better-looking, nicer-speaking individual here today. They were, this was a really smart move on their part. You've done a good job and...
Well, thank you, I appreciate it. And if I may just say, part of the reason that we're here is that this was actually denied prior to you, this, this particular building permit was denied prior to the granting of the other special use permit, so this process actually started and was appealed prior to that other granting, so it kind of was already started in motion, and that's why we're here, not just to be really annoying.
Well, anyway, you weren't annoying.
All right, there's a motion? Let, let's vote on it quickly.
I move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Okay, post, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand. You're excused, certainly. Item sixty-five, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings in dangerous buildings for nuisance litter abatements? Thank you. And folks, this is a time for citizens' participation. Item sixty-six, comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to speak, please give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Deborah Anthony. I've been doing a lot of writing and reading, and I've been doing a lot of artwork, too, just on top of it. And, uh, and I kinda figure I do a good job on, 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 on all this stuff, and, um, I'm gonna keep up the good work of what, of what I'm doing, and, and, and you make, and you make a good mayor, by the way.
Thank you, and we're very proud of you, Deborah.
Okay, uh, I want you to have a nice day.
Thank you very much for coming down for it. Next, please.
Hello, I'm Rasan Joshua Collins, a minister for the Lord Jesus Christ, and, um, I'd just like to remind everyone, sexual sin and greed leads to hell, to be sober, don't curse, smoke, gamble, or lie, and to help the homeless. Jesus was homeless, too. And also, like I've already told you, under Nevada statute, chapter two-zero-one, you're to uphold good morals and public decency laws, and that's not happening, that's treason under NRS one-ninety-six. A lot of you belong in jail right now, actually, according to the law. And many children worldwide are being corrupted every day. And, um, under NRS two-oh-two dot oh-six-oh, this is the Attorney General's opinion, "The purpose of the statute is to prohibit minors from loitering on premises where alcohol beverages are sold," and, and the purpose is to protect the morals and health of minors. So what are you doing to, to protect the health of, and the morals of minors? I don't see much of that happening in Sin City. And, uh, just so you know, a neglected and delinquent child is one who writes or uses a valle, obscene, or indecent language according to the law, or is, is guilty of indecent immoral lascivious conduct, or one who's in, is leading a, a lewd or immoral life. And obviously, that's happening all over this city. Now, the city of Las Vegas has a duty and a moral obligation, an legal obligation, to protect the health and morals of minors, and they're not doing that. Uh, under the law, they're supposed to keep them away from undesirable persons under NRS two-oh-two dot oh-six-oh, to work for that, and to keep them, uh, from being subject to the urge to purchase liquor. And obviously, all these advertisements for liquor going on, all these kids on Fremont Street, that's happening all the time. They're being encouraged to do things that, that are immoral, uh, with the strip clubs and all the other things all, all over there, so, uh, you know, Jesus says, you know, you encourage these young people to sin, be better to tie a millstone around your neck and be thrown into the sea. And if your right hand caused you to sin, right, cut it off. It'd be better to lose your hand than to be cast into hell. Okay, so, maybe some of you don't believe in hell, but know that it's very real, and I see a lot of you heading there. Uh, no amount of money is worth going to hell. And, uh, you know, Ezekiel three, chapter three and thirty-three also tells us to warn the wicked, to turn from their wicked way, right? Or the blood's on your hands. So, are you encouraging sin? Are you encouraging people not to sin? Okay? Now, I'm convinced to follow Jesus, and I don't wanna be guilty of people's blood on my hands, especially children. And I'm out there all the time on Fremont Street preaching the word of God, and I thank God that I'm not doing what you're doing, just ignoring, you know, the sin. Okay? And I'm encouraging them to, all the, all the commands of God, to be sober and those types of things. And I've been blessed for that. So, I encourage people listening to, to, to reach out to the youth. Unfortunately, our, our, our city council and the mayor aren't really doing that as far as promoting morality, which they should, and I just believe that you belong in handcuffs. Okay? I spoke to you people two weeks ago about this, nothing's been done about it, and it disagrees my spirit, and, uh, don't be surprised when you end up in hell. Okay, I warned you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can't follow that act. Okay. My name is Susan Wade.
Ms. Wade, please speak into the microphone.
Okay, either one?
Either one is fine.
All right. My name is Susan Wade, and I have several issues that I'd like to make you aware of that I don't think you're aware of. Um, uh, first one being, well, first things first, being I have an introduction sheet, so to speak, as to who I am, so you know who the heck I am. So, I wanted to especially make sure that Mrs., that she left. Mrs. Tarkanian got a copy, because, uh, I know that she cares about older folks, and it, this has a lot to do with older folks. And seeing as I'm getting there very rapidly, I'm concerned about it. No longer invincible. Uh, anyway, I did witness several incidents on the bus, when I was on the city bus, which was riding along a city street, uh, where as, uh, two of the security guards acted very offensively to folks. And, um, I wanted you to be aware of that. On the seventh of this month, I witnessed, uh, one of the security guards on the bus actually walk up to a woman and kick her, not once but twice, in the shins. She was within her rights because the bus was taking a break, a ten-minute break at the East Side Cannery, and, um, so she decided to close her eyes. She was about eighty, she had her shopping cart in front of her, she was doing nothing wrong. She didn't say a word at all during this whole incident, which really amazed me. I wondered afterward if maybe she was deaf. But, um, during that interval, when the bus driver got off the bus to take his break, the other, the security guard walked up to her and kicked her twice. Well, I told him, "Don't do that." I said, "Do not do that in front of this Marine's mother." I have a son who's a missing Marine right now. I said, "Listen, if you have to wake her up or you feel the need to do that, just nudge your shoulder like you would your grandmother." I mean, I'm sure you wouldn't kick your grandmother, she's about eighty-something years old. Anyway, he was very, not very responsive to me, and I told the bus driver, and, so finally, he copped a plea and told the bus driver, "Yeah," you know, while she, she had her eyes closed, and eighty years old, she's gonna have her eyes closed at some point riding the bus. Trust me, whether, you know, no matter what, but in any case. Uh, that was on the seventh, and, um, then on the tenth, there was, yeah, I was, that was on the, um, two-oh-two bus, Flamingo, going, um, towards the East Side Cannery.
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off now, and I'll tell you why. Um, the, the items that you're talking about have not happened in the city over which we have jurisdiction.
Yes, it happened.
No, no, when you talk about Flamingo, uh, Flamingo was in the county. Uh, but what I will suggest to you is that the appropriate forum that you should be addressing is the Regional Transportation Commission.
Oh, I did that, that's what I was gonna tell you.
Okay, but, uh...
I was gonna tell you what their response was, and they took this, since riding the bus since then, I haven't seen one security guard, thank God.
Okay.
But Allied is in charge of that, and the people that they hire are very rude and crude, is all you say.
Okay, if you made that known to the RTC, then you went to the right place.
Yes, and also the, I made that known to the Allied Security people.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, also...
I, I have to cut you short, though, because of...
There's several other issues, though. Housing for seniors.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and...
We've gotta lower the age, sir. I'm, I'm disabled, I was run over by a car, I, I didn't ask for that.
I'm sure you didn't, and...
And I was, I worked thirty years in this town as a waitress and, and a showroom photographer. And, uh, I, you know, I called Mr. Wolfson's office.
If you would like, I, I could have one of our city employees talk to you, i-if you'd like that.
Well, i-if, if, if, okay, but I mean, if people aren't aware of these things...
Okay, but they'll get, they'll get the word to us. I just have to keep the, the meeting going because it's been a very long meeting.
I understand, but this is, it affects tourism because this...
I just was gonna say that there's someone you might wanna meet with, is Marie Castillo-Couch.
Yes, I was gonna suggest that.
Centering on seniors right now.
Yes, we have somebody who specializes on senior work, so...
Well, I know how aware you are of, of tourism, and I was always in service.
If you'd be kind enough, uh, to, uh, please, uh, try to arrange a meeting between, um, uh, Ms. Wade and Maria Castillo-Couch, and then she can report to us as to the issues. And if there's anything that has to do with the city, then we can, uh, look into it. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate there being, I appreciate there being a starting point, because, because we aren't treated well.
That's what we're doing.
And we're not getting the services we're supposed to get.
We're gonna make sure, we're gonna make sure that your complaint and, and your comments will be conveyed to all of us.
All right, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, and that's just, uh, just an introduction to who I am.
Very good.
So you know who I am, and I, I do have both the...
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, next, please.
All righty, then.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street.
Excuse me, Todd, one second. Um, Mr. Adams, if you'd be kind enough to tell her how to reach Maria, that'd be great.
All right, thank you, and I will.
Good.
No, and I, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna pursue this to this degree.
Good.
We have to, we have to.
We're gonna help.
My survival depends on...
We're going to help you.
Okey-dokey.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Farlow?
I'd like to comment, make a comment on item number eighteen this morning, and I hate to bring this up, but this is the cats and dogs issue. But there's a, I don't know which one of the outfits it was, but there's an outfit that goes around and they pick up the cats and neuter them and then replace them from, in the, in the, where they found them. And that, in our neighborhood, is working out terrific. The reason why is because we have forty-nine foreclosed homes in our, in, in that, in that precinct. And with those foreclosed homes, and you're talking about homes, uh, that have, uh, the, the crawl spaces and that, you get mice and, and rats. And, and, and I'm telling you, that program that whoever came up with it is a wonderful program. Now, to get the lawyers involved in this. For Dr. Scott, I would ask him this. If I see a cat that's running around, that's an unneutered male, and I think the cat was been, had been dumped, if I trap that cat and have him, take him down and have him neutered, and then release him, you know, am I gonna get in trouble for that? No.
No.
I don't, I don't think there's any law about releasing a cat that you found.
What if it belongs to somebody, you know, he's always around my place?
Well, I mean, you could always take it to the pound or something of that nature, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, no, you, you're, you're allowed to trap cats if they're on your property, and they don't belong to you, and, uh, I would prefer that if, if they have a collar around them, we call the owner of the collar. Otherwise, that's fine. You tell them, you tell them if they try to give you a hard time, to call the mayor.
Do they have tax for cats?
All right, anybody else?
You're so...
No, don't do that.
Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to, uh, to say goodbye to Erica Wyborg. She's our UNLV expert, and she'll be leaving us this week, her last, uh, couple days with us. She's done an excellent job in our criminal and civil division. She's prosecuted a few cases in our criminal division and won a couple of her cases, and, uh, she's in her third year at Boyd, and, uh, we wish her luck.
Okay, well, it's been a pleasure having you with us. What kind of, well, let, let me, uh, call item number sixty-seven. Are there any members of the council who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? We had, uh, Mr. Scott speak, not as a member of the council, but at the appropriate time, that's fine. Um, what kind of cases did you prosecute?
Uh, they let me do a lot of really high-level traffic cases.
Okay. All right, that's okay. The same rules of evidence apply in a high-level traffic case as in a low-level drug case?
Mm-hmm.
No problem. Okay, anybody like to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Once again, Nevada Child Seekers has provided me with information about a missing child in our valley. Nevada Child Seekers' mission is to advocate for and engage in prevention, identification, and location efforts on behalf of missing and exploited children. Their most important function is to work with law enforcement, family members, and members of our community to find missing and runaway children and return them home safely. I do this every meeting because I firmly believe that the more people we have looking for these children, the better chance we have of returning them safely to their family. To date, over half of the children I have shown during our council meetings have been located. Uh, today, we have, uh, a young man by the name of Tyler Ash. He is a runaway and has been missing since April second, two thousand and eleven, so just about, uh, two and a half, three weeks. He's sixteen years old. We are asking for your help in trying to locate him. Tyler is five feet, three inches tall, weighs a hundred and ten pounds, has blue eyes and black hair, and also has snakebite piercing. He was last seen at the Santa Fe Station Casino, wearing a white shirt and blue jeans. The more people looking for Tyler, the better chance we have of returning him safely to his family. If you know where Tyler is, please contact Nevada Child Seekers at four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine, or Las Vegas Metro, Missing Persons Unit, at eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor, and it is summertime again, council members, and I think many of us are doing movies in the park. Word six is no exception at Centennial Hills Amphitheater, April thirtieth, which is a Saturday night, uh, seven-thirty PM. Everyone's invited down for a free movie. We'll be watching Despicable Me, so bring your lawn chairs and your fried chicken, and come on down and, uh, watch a great movie for free. Bring your children and your friends with you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, the councilwoman?
Uh, I'd just like to mention that, uh, the mayor is going to be visiting Rose Warren School, uh, next week, um, April twenty-seventh, because it's between seven-twenty, seven-thirty. He's going to help greet the students. It's part of his Healthy Lifestyle Walk Program, and it's in conjunction with Nevada Moves Day, where we're urging everybody on April twenty-seventh to walk, ride a bike, and get all energized the way the mayor is.
Are you gonna be there?
Yes.
Good.
And, uh, the other thing, the other thing at Rose Warren, later in that day at one o'clock, they're going to have the ribbon cutting for the, what they call the Firefly Garden. It's sponsored by the Firefly, and, uh, it is an absolutely excellent program. I think your wife might have visited it already, but it's where the children have planted I think your wife might have visited it already, but it's where the children have planted all of the herbs, all of the other foods. They're going to now cut the ribbon on their garden and start harvesting pretty soon some of their fruits of their labor.
What time is that going to be?
1:00.
1:00 at Rose Warren as well.
That's right, at Rose Warren.
Have the date?
The same day, April 27th.
Very good, thank you.
And then I wanted to say that next Friday, April 29th, is DJs for PJs Day. I know I attended one in Councilwoman Wolfson's ward one time, and now we have it again, and this is where disc jockeys from local radio stations, in cooperation with community agencies, are collecting pajamas for abused and neglected children, such, and they will take them to places such as Shade Tree and Safe Nest. These are children who have been moved unexpectedly and quickly from their homes for various safety reasons. So we are collecting pajamas here at the City Hall, and there are lots of boxes. There's a box on different floors, but I must tell you, I can't see any pajamas in there. So I went and got some pajamas, and I put them in there, and I'm showing all my fellow councilmen to come on out. I challenge you to pick some nice pajamas. We got this, we got baby pajamas.
Take it easy, councilwoman.
And we have dog pajamas. I'm telling you, and you know what? They're on sale throughout the city. You don't have to pay too much, but it means a lot to these children to have something new and nice and warm when they're taken from their homes. So I'm asking you to please consider donating a new pair of girls' or boys' PJs. It can be from infant up to triple XL, because we do have some teenagers that hit that position. And then on Friday, I personally will go to Kohl's on Charleston and Durango and bring all these numerous pajamas that I know my fellow councilmen are going to help gather. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilman Barlow, do you want to talk about pajamas or pajamas?
You know what? I'll talk about pajamas and pajamas, and, councilwoman, I will donate some pajamas and pajamas to your event, so I look forward to it.
Oh, that's good. I was going to challenge you to see how many we could raise, you and I.
Well, oh, between the two of us?
Well, see, if you're board or my board, or whatever.
Okay, well, yeah, we can do that. I like that. Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. Mayor, council, and the community, the, I'll be hosting a neighborhood meeting to talk to the community in regards to the redesign of the West Side School. As you all very well know, the West Side School has been listed now on one of, as one of the historical sites in Las Vegas, and so for that, we're looking at the community to come out, specifically those who either have attended or graduated from the West Side School, to please come to the neighborhood meeting, which is Monday, April 25th, at the Doolittle Community Center, starting at 5:30. Where I want to have a discussion with the community in regards to some of the programmable uses for this historical site, and all of your comments are welcome, so please come out, 5:30 this Monday, April 25th, Doolittle Community Center.